Okay, we've got an action-packed meeting this evening. And I know there were one or two members of the public here. You're very welcome. This is a meeting held in public. A public meeting, but it's held in public. So you're very welcome. Couple of housekeeping announcements to start with. First of all, there is no fire alarm planned. So if you do hear a fire alarm, we need to respond. Make your way out. There are plenty of members of staff, all trained as fire marshals, and they'll tell you what to do. Anybody with mobility issues, gather in the foyer outside there. On the left-hand side, assistance will be provided. Toilets are at either end of the corridor, just outside the door. To the right, sorry, to my right, to your left. You have, yeah, ladies that way, gents that way. You can tell I still have problems with left and right. Lord Mayor's announcements, I'm just going to make two short ones. First of all, UEA's University of Sanctuary, which I attended recently, they had a launch of a week. It was a fantastic event and there are some legacies from it. And if you want to see some of the interesting stuff that was generated, just Google UEA Sanctuary suitcase and you'll find links to a number of small stories, but very powerful stories of refugees who are now studying at UEA thanks to their initiative. I'd like briefly to mention a fundraiser I went to recently at the traffic club. There are only two traffic clubs in the world, one here and one in New York. So once again, Norwich has it large. I think the, yeah, sure. I think the other thing to mention just briefly is the fantastic fundraiser we had for the civic charity. Thank you all those who came. It was a great night, it was a fun night and we made a load of dosh for the charity. The only trouble is it needs plenty more. Like every other charity, it suffered with austerity. I'll make that in a moment. No, I should do that. Apologies. We have received apologies for councillors Button and Champion. Are you aware, anybody here aware of any other apologies?
Councillor Shmira.
Councillor Shmira and councillor Everett. Okay. The last thing I want to do as in this part of the meeting is to say that it is our chief execs, last council, Stephen Evans, is moving on. And rather than hog this point, I'd like to ask the group leaders each to say a few words. Councillor Waters, would you like to begin, please?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Now, for those of you who remember Laura McGilvery's farewell bash at City Hall, we had a crowded forum outside of the council chamber. The Mancroft Room was busy, filled with people celebrating, enjoying themselves and giving Laura a good send-off. A matter of a few weeks later, tumbleweed was rolling through the corridors. So when Stephen was appointed as chief executive, he was given a very great welcome. He was told that in no time at all, he would get to know everybody in the city. And I think one of the last in-person events we attended was the launch of the Norfolk and Norwich Festival. And those assurances were given and Stephen was expecting to get around the city in no time at all. And then Covid struck. And City Hall was empty and the world had changed. Our first pandemic in 100 years. And it is at that point that I realised that we had chosen the right person from the competitive shortlist. Because without missing a beat, Stephen moved into emergency mood, which is where we were as a city. A disease that we had at that time no cure for, people vulnerable. The organisation of City Hall had to respond quickly. And I have been and I was immensely impressed with Stephen's calm resolve, his efficiency, his leadership in leading the council, the organisation through that torrid period of time for all of us, that put pressure on everybody. But people looked to their city council, they looked to the leadership of the city council to see them through those extraordinarily difficult times. And Stephen did that superbly. And in a crisis, you think of opportunities. The best leadership is where you see the opportunities of being able to move forward. And so I would imagine we had probably the most comprehensive Covid recovery plan published anywhere by any local authority in the country. And that was the work of Stephen and its team of officers in pulling that together to show people that there was light at the end of the tunnel, the things that we could do, the things we could move forward on. Now, Stephen, of course, was appointed and it is normal that after six months, you have an assessment of your probationary period. I decided to waive that probation period and to assess Stephen's aptitude for the job because there was no need to. He had done that job superbly. And it has been a great privilege and pleasure to work with Stephen. Time has flown. I mean, it's three years, but actually when we think about it, just how much has happened in that time. It's like the four horsemen of the apocalypse have trampled around the city. Cost of living crisis, some eccentric politics going on with a short-tenured premiership, all of these things, and yet we've come through that. We've come through that process. Now, I can say flattering things and I know them to be true, but it's always important to have external validation. And Stephen was very keen to test us with that external assessment of where we had got to, what we were doing. Because there's been an immense amount of work going on in City Hall to reflect the fact that there are massive changes and to get the council fit for those new times. And we took that report to the last week's cabinet meeting and it's a very positive report. There are things to do, things to improve. It would be surprising if there weren't. But I think it is Stephen's legacy from his strong leadership, his effective and decisive approach to making this council as strong as it can be. That will be his legacy. So I'm very pleased that Stephen has got the recognition he deserves and goes back to London, takes up a role in the Royal Borough of Windsor and Maidenhead. And I personally wish him every success and I will remember the three years we worked together as leader and chief executive very fondly. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Galvine.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yeah, we can probably all agree that Stephen's arrival at the council introduced an unmissable step change. And there are a lot of examples I could point to. Governance changes, a new focus on compliance and the change in council culture. But many of his contributions feel a lot more personal too. The council now has a more diverse workforce with a large increase in the percentage of employees from ethnic minority groups. The council now has a mental health strategy and Stephen has shown a much-needed light, thrown a much-needed light on male mental health and wellbeing. And his work to support refugees across Norfolk has also been recognised and extensive. There are two achievements that I too would highlight especially. Firstly, as we've heard, we can't wish him farewell without thanking him on behalf of all Norwich residents for his tireless and stellar work through the pandemic, a true baptism of fire. And we can be thankful that we had a clear-headed and remarkably resilient person heading up the council through this time. Secondly, I would like to thank him for leaving the council in a position where we finally have an investment plan to retrofit Norwich council houses. And this will be your contribution to Norwich's fight against climate change. As opposition leader, I can truly say that Stephen has made this council more professional, more transparent and more inclusive for all councillors. And I'm sincerely hoping this is a change that will stick. I guess the one thing left to establish for you is to do that retrofit company, as you're known for your efficiency. Seven days should be plenty. And on your way to Windsor, please take some of the Norwich pride, the Norwich joy and the Green Rebellion with you. I have a feeling it would serve you well there. We got you a small thank you gift to mark the end of your professional time in Norwich with an opportunity to let your hair down. Thank you.
Councillor Ryan, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think there's going to be a common theme here to some of the words that are being expressed, but I'd like to associate myself with the comments and councillor Waters and Galvin. But I was looking back today at the time when Stephen joined and I had a bit of a look through my email box, I keep all my emails. So I trawled back through to early 2020 and I was looking at the subject lines for those first emails from Stephen and they were C19, C19, Covid-19. And there was a theme there of, and councillor Galvin used the term baptism of fire, which is one that I put in my notes. And it really was, you know, these were changing times. I remember that council meeting, March 2020, when everything was about to change. And here we were, we had a reduced council meeting and there were less than 10 councillors in this chamber, looking how busy it is now, but there were less than 10 of us in here and we were taking those final decisions before heading out into the unknown. And quickly after that, I found myself along with other group leaders involved in meetings every other day with Stephen via Zoom, I think probably it was then before we'd migrated over to Teams. And what a changed world it was. But Stephen led the council brilliantly through that very uncertain period and his work over the last three years, he's worked hard to shape the council. I think the council will be very fit for the future moving forward. So thank you for that. And in many respects, the recent LGAP review is a testament of the hard work that Stephen has shown and validates much of the structural and governance changes that you've implemented, Stephen. So thank you very much for that. So on behalf of our group, we'd like to wish you the absolute best for the future. Thank you.
Now, I don't know if this is unprecedented or not, but I'm going to invite Stephen just to say a few words in reply at this point. I think it's proper and fitting. Would you please?
I think it is unprecedented. Is this allowed? I don't know. Okay, so putting me on the spot. I would firstly thank you for all of everybody's kind words. I leave with a heavy heart. I say that because, you know, it has been the honour of my career to serve the people of Norwich. And that's ultimately what the job's about, that's ultimately what the council is about. And I know that that's ultimately what your role as councillors is about. And I think the importance of public service, of community, has really come to the fore over the last three years for obvious reasons. The city council is blessed with some truly excellent colleagues who work really, really hard to do their best for the city. The peer review came out with a number of themes and it pointed to, you know, the work of councillors and the work of cross-party, councillors working together cross-party. And again, that's really come to the fore over the last few years. It's also highlighted the positive relationship between councillors and officers. These are things which are really, really hard to win. And actually, we should make sure that we don't give those things up and we protect those things. The city council will always be here. That is, I think, certain. And whoever takes up the mantle from an officer perspective, I think, is going to have a great job. It's a wonderful city, it's a wonderful organisation and I wish everybody the best and continue doing what you're doing. And, you know, and it's going to be, it's going to be, I think, more success is coming. There will be challenges, there are challenges, but I think if we keep the mindset that we've seen over the last few years, I think there's not too many challenges we can't overcome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We're going to say cheerio to our few friends this evening. Seven councillors, which is quite a chunk, isn't it, are not standing down at the elections in May this year. There are councillors Burgeline, councillor Button, councillor Carlo, councillor Graham, councillor Harris, councillor Erin Fulton-McAllister and councillor Waters. I'd like to invite in turn group spokespersons to say a few words about retiring members. Councillor Waters, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank councillors Carlo, Burgeline and Graham for their contribution to the council, for the perspectives they bring to our discourse and our policymaking and their absolute passion and commitment to doing the very best for the residents of Norwich. And I wish you all the very best in your post-council lives. You'll have to tell me how you get on because I may want to share therapy with you. But I wanted to talk a little bit in more detail about three of my own colleagues. I'm going to start with Erin. Very good to see you here, Erin. So Erin was elected in 2018 and then again in 2019 when we had all-out elections. She was an energetic chair of the Museums Committee and a leading light in pushing the agenda to see investment in renewal in the Castle Museum. Of course, the Castle Museum is undergoing significant transformation and that's a great cultural legacy she has brought to her time as a councillor and as chair of museums. She's been an incredibly assiduous, hard-working vice-chair of the Licensing Committee, played an active role in the committee helping to develop and pursue the agenda which sees our night-time economy and licensing vehicles become safer and inclusive. She is without doubt a passionate trade unionist and committed to expanding our work through the Real Living Wage Campaign, the Good Economy Commission, as well as supporting local trade unions in the city. So it is a significant legacy you leave us and we wish you all the very best in your personal life and in your working life. Thank you, Erin. So Sally Button, councillor Sally Button, who isn't with us this evening, was first elected in 2012, re-elected in 2016 and in 2019. And she also served diligently on the Museums Committee, chaired Licensing, served on all major committees, including planning. Always passionate about council housing, fought hard to ensure that Beaufort was developed with outstanding new council properties, particularly in Rain Park. Her experience of being a private renter and experiencing the vagaries of this sector drove her passion to tackle landlordism in the city. She was an excellent vice-chair of the Planning Committee and instinctively knew that investment in Norwich was important to provide homes, to provide jobs, to provide opportunities for the people of the city. And her experience, her skills, her passions and her principles will be sadly missed by this council. So I will take the opportunity to see Sally relay to her the comments that have been made about her and to tell her how warmly she is regarded by her fellow councillors. Lastly, I come to my good colleague, who has been the deputy leader of the council, part of the leadership team with me, Gail. So Gail brought with her a tremendous amount of experience. She was a county councillor for Beaufort for eight years and I think is completing 11 years as a city councillor. Her talents were immediately recognised and she has spent a decade as a cabinet member covering a range of portfolios. But it is as part of the leadership team, herself and Gail, for the last eight years that I particularly want to remark on and the work that she has done as the portfolio holder for housing. It is really important in the leadership team to work together, to trust each other, to have each other's backs and to have a space where we can share and debate and discuss and work through issues. And that is the relationship that I've enjoyed with Gail. She is immensely energetic. She has an eye for detail which I don't have actually. I tend to be a bit sort of, well, you know, ethereal. So she brings me back to the ground and she has done amazingly well. I have to tell you that, you know, in the history of this city and particularly this Labour administration, the role of housing chair, when we had a committee system and subsequently a cabinet portfolio model, has been one of the most important jobs of all the posts, all the positions on the city council. It's our major service. And there have been remarkably distinguished people who have held that role through the years. And I've met many of them in my time as leader of the council, but also in my time when I first joined the council in 1988. And I have to tell you that Gail looks up to no one in that role. And, you know, the crowning achievement in housing has been Dulsmith Street. That was a very happy and celebratory occasion when we had won that award, the first council house scheme ever to be awarded, the Sterling Prize. And it won an additional prize as well for commitment to public housing. And the drive and energy that Gail has brought to developing a pipeline of housing schemes which are rolling forward. We owe her an immense sense of gratitude for the work she's done on that. In addition to the dozens of other things she's done, including her very important work under Broad's authority. But I have greatly valued Gail's support. My role would be impossible without her support, her advice, her insights and her experience. And I will always remember these eight years as I think probably being the high point of my time on the city council. So thank you, Gail.
Councillor Stunard, would perhaps you like to say something?
Something. Thank you, Lord Mayor. Aaron has asked me to say a few words on his behalf. Sorry?
Did he write it?
Pardon?
Did he write it?
This is co-written, this is a joint effort, okay? But I had the final editorial control. So Alan's asked me to say a few words on his behalf about how he feels about his time as a Norwich city councillor. And he has had to have input into this significantly because he's been around rather a long time and there's no one else here who remembers back that far to 1988 any longer. It's only true, only speak truth. The first thing he would say is that any positives of his time as a councillor are the result of the work of many people, fellow councillors, council officers and partners across the city. And that's typical of Alan's modesty, of course, that he would say that. And I know how well-regarded he is across the city amongst his colleague leaders across all sectors and all partners, very, very well-regarded. And that's been impressed upon me recently, meeting them and talking to them. One driver for Alan has been bringing the city together using our civic leadership role. And there are a number of examples going back a long, long time to 1994. Norwich 800 was a year-long citywide celebration of 800 years of self-government. Norwich 21, which was inspired by Agenda 21, a UN plan for sustainable development as a product of the Earth Summit held in Rio in 1992. And the council winning a European award for its sustainability strategy all that time ago. The Norwich 2040 vision of 2017 grows from strength to strength to tackle the social environmental and economic challenges we face as a city and is an incredibly ambitious project, but that ambition befitting the needs of the city looking ahead strategically. And then, of course, it's buildings and there's quite a few important buildings being built during the time of Alan's been involved with the council, but the one he's most proud of is the forum, rising out of the ashes of the former City Library, which those of us who are old enough remember were in the burning to the ground in 1994, I think it was. Then there are the aspirations that failed to come to pass and this is part of what Alan wrote as well, so he's very honest about those things that didn't come to pass. And one which is close to all our hearts is unitary status. There've been three attempts to get this across the line, we nearly did last time, we were just thwarted at the last minute by the incoming Tory government, having had a shadow year, which is greatly sad, but as he says, our time will come and I'm sure it will, particularly hopefully with an incoming Labour government to help us. But on the plus side, and Alan has played a few blinders on this, we have avoided being reorganised out of existence through local governments restructuring. There were a couple of neighbouring authorities that would dearly love to create a greater Norwich district which would subsume Norwich and our progressive ideas, which is shared across this chamber in a sea of Tory seats. And we've managed to hold that off and Alan's done a fantastic job at doing that and standing up for the city and our ability to drive our own destiny. The battle for decent funding settlements at the council has not been recognised and we've been through a very difficult period starting in 2010 and over the last 13 years, an incredibly difficult period, but we have maintained vital frontline services throughout that period and most recently the cost of living crisis in supporting residents. And above all, we've remained relevant. Funding successes, well, our ambitious housing programme, which is down to Gail of course, and also winning investment for the city, and we have won a lot of investment over recent years in particular, not least the £25 million towns deal. Also our designation by the Living Wage Foundation as a living wage city with the target of tripling the number of real living wage employers across Norwich over the next three years. That is an ambition to be proud of for local people, our lowest paid in the city. Alan says he's lucky enough to be leader of the City Council twice, but there have been ups and downs. He lost his seat in 2005 votes, I didn't realise it was that close. When he decided to stand again, three years later, Labour were in opposition and the committee system had been swept away, there was a new leader and cabinet model introduced, so he had to learn again from scratch. Through the last 30 past years, Alan says, he's enjoyed his time in the council, it's never been dull, always stimulating and he will miss it immensely, but he says it's time to move on and try new things and he wishes everyone at City Hall the very best for the future. And I can say, and there's no fear of contradiction on my part, that we will miss you immensely, Alan, and your contribution over five decades. I don't want to make you feel old, but we've got the 80s, the 90s, the 00s, the 20s, the 90s, the 20s, it's five decades. Do you want to go and have a lie-down? It's not past your bedtime. And it's been an important contribution that you've made, an enormous contribution you've made and we've just scratched the surface with the comments I've just made. And the loss of your lengthy five decades and in-depth experience is going to be very noticeable, it's going to leave a huge gap. However, retirement is to be enjoyed and you've definitely earned yours, five decades. So we wish you a relaxing and enjoyable retirement and I hope you have as much time sucking the van rouge in France, which I feel beckons fairly shortly for, yeah, I thought so, as much time doing that if you want, but honestly, Alan, after five decades it's really hard to do justice to your career at the council. All I can just say is that we all want to thank you very, very much for the enormous contribution you've made over those five decades.
Councillor Galvin, would you please say a few remarks?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. There are lots of special memories that I could share of councillor waters too. Mine are perhaps, over the time of my as a councillor, I don't go back as far, but I asked other councillors as well for their memories and they told me about, and I remember this, the time he bandished a tin of baked beans during a budget speech, the time he quoted the Bible at councillor Lubbock, the time when he confessed his deep love of tennis at scrutiny. But perhaps my favourite is how he turned up with the city of Norwich Lion badge to one of our councillors' homes the day she lost her seat. Alan, your friendly kindness and your love of the council and of local government indeed has shone out. You care about the council, you care about the city, you care about its culture. You have set a standard and a tone that have allowed many to participate and have welcomed members of the public with courtesy and charm. I know you love this building, but it's the wider work of the council and indeed local government that's dearest to your heart. So thank you. Moving on to councillor Harris. Gail has been a warm presence on the council with unfailing calm, good humour and a ready laugh and smile. And she's shouldered the incredible weight of the housing portfolio with determination and pride. And I have it on very good authority that she cried with pleasure at the good standard of a new set of homes that the council built recently. A fully genuine, kind and knowledgeable person, she will be missed by all as well. We hope and trust that you will both enjoy a wonderful retirement and find ways to carry on actively participating in the civic life of what you have helped to keep a very fine city. So the Green Group of councillors, past and present, would like to make a presentation to you both now in token of all your passion, energy and service to the council. In the Peruvian rainforest, the Wampis nation are fighting to protect a 1.3 million hectare territory. Their struggle contributes to the world's struggle to end the climate emergency. We know that as councillors you have sought to reach out in service to others and that you care about the future of our shared planet. To mark your time here, we've taken the liberty of measuring your wards, Chrome and Catton Grove, and made donations to protect areas the same size of the Wampis nation territory. Size of Chrome and size 262.61 hectares and size of part of Catton Grove, because it's too big to protect it all, 235 hectares, are now protected through the Forest Peoples Programme in your names and that of your wards. In Wampis culture, there's a principle called Tarimak Puyut or living in harmony, which means taking care of territory because life depends on it, to leave it in good care for the next generation. In 2015, the Wampis nation established the first autonomous indigenous government in Peru based on this principle of self-recognition of their cultural identity and ancestral lands. This is allowing them to collectively defend their land from the extractive industries and take good care of the forest, saying no to oil, mining and logging companies and restoring the ancestral knowledge rather than going with modern forms of government which exploit and destroy. Every year, the territory of the Wampis nation absorbed 57 million tonnes of carbon dioxide, work they acknowledges for the whole of humanity. I am sure that both of you will be glad to think that your wards are part of this vital work and how these treasured pieces of Norwich fit into the wider picture of our shared world. So thank you. I will now also say a few words to councillor Erin Porter-McAllister, but please also give our thanks to Sally Button too when you see her. I have it on very good authority that Erin is a force of nature. Our councillors have come to know her as honest, fair and above all fearless. One of her qualities we have come to appreciate most is that Erin does not engage in tribalism that can sweep us all away in politics at times, her integrity stands above it. She will stand up for residents and employees and her clear passion is workers' rights. We would not in the slightest be surprised to find that familiar face at the top of a union in a few years' time. So please accept the, on behalf of the group. I now turn to three green councillors that it will be very hard to replace and I cannot hope to cover all the work they've done whilst in office. I can truly say that these three councillors have been powerhouses and worked indefatigably for what they believed in. And more than that, against the odds, they have achieved their goals. I count myself lucky to have sat alongside them. Sometimes I confess I could do little but sit open-mouthed and marvel at their commitment and strength. Each first and foremost has been a pure gold ward councillor, taking time to listen to residents and act on their behalf, even and especially when that's not been easy. And then beyond that, each has taken the work of the council further in key areas, bringing fresh vision and determination and having the courage to offer this again and again. Councillor Lesley Graham first represented Thorpe Hamlet in 2010 without stinting a moment of her time ever since. Unfailingly kind, she's known for listening carefully to each story, she's never dismissive, she treats everyone with dignity and most importantly, she responds with action. In one case, she went to court to support a constituent at very short notice. Her deep principles are her touchstone and Lesley never falters. Her commitment to justice and equality, but most of all to peace-building are evident in her work. She's not afraid of action, but also she always reads papers, makes comments and goes the extra mile to understand and make the effort to contribute. Some of Lesley's achievements are saving the Wentworth Sports Centre from closure, setting up community gardens at Old Library Wood and James Stewart Gardens and working to improve safety and conditions in sexual entertainment venues. Lesley, we've depended on you and you've not let us down, not for one minute, so thank you. We wish you well sailing in your boat, my good woman, into the sunset and look forward to staying in touch. Councillor Denise Carlo has represented Nelson Ward since 2011 and there's hardly a door you can knock on in the ward without hearing a good word said of her. One gentleman stopped me in the street to say she had the kindest heart of anyone he'd ever met and I know what he meant. I've known her to take residents to hospital for their appointments once she had a family stay in her house and collected furniture and household items for them. But she also has a formidable mind and an incredible expertise in planning, expertise which has brought the council some very important challenges, for example, well-evidenced indefatigable opposition to the expensive, unnecessary and anachronistic NDR. Close to her heart sits biodiversity and she's an unfailing champion of urban nature. Recently, viewing some new houses, Denise carefully checked if the hedgehog highways recommended in her planning were in situ. They were not. She made sure they were put in place. Denise, for always swallowing through and on behalf of people and hedgehogs, we thank you. We hope you enjoy many creative projects and look forward to hearing about them and reading the books we're sure you will read. Councillor Sandra Böglund has represented Mancroft since 2019 and before that was a Wentworth councillor, in 2014 to 2018. I must confess, it was I who bought Sandra her first cup of tea and discussed her standing. It was the best-valued cup of tea I ever bought. Early on in those days, we did a cake sale in the Royal, we helped set up fitness classes. Even on one memorable occasion, she had a special election song composed and recorded to the minority people to vote, but I won't play it now, but it is fun, but that was just the beginning. Sandra has always brought a freshness of vision and an incredible agility to the role of councillor, leading to some very, very valuable work. Social capital in communities, antisocial behaviour, fly-tipping and of course retrofitting, all difficult areas in which she's made successful change, which are based at heart on her twin convictions that people deserve to live well and that data is the new air. Sandra is on a career boat from the council and grudgingly I concede that the Climate Change Committee need her skills. So I cannot say much more other than thank you and come back soon, I know you will. I hope and think I've spoken for everyone here across the chamber in this admiration of what these amazing councillors, all of them, have brought to this role and offering our sincere thanks and best wishes for their next challenges. Thank you all from all of us.
Councillor Wright, floor is yours.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to begin by thanking Alan, Mike and Lucy for the words that they've said already about councillors from their own groups who are standing down. We're saying goodbye today to Alan, Gail, Erin, Sally, Lesley, Denise and Sandra. And I did a quick tot-up of the maths earlier, I'm going to beat Mike's five decades and I think we're looking at combined over a quarter of a century of councillor experience that's leaving us today and that's significant, that's a significant thing for the organisation and all the work that our colleagues have put in over their time at the council, we'd like to offer our sincere thanks for that. Each councillor has championed their local community and served the city well over those years and I'd like to offer my best wishes to the future. I'm not going to speak about everyone, but doesn't mean I don't find you all amazing, but time is tight, so I'm just going to say a few words. Firstly, about Denise, I actually live in Nelson, so Denise is one of my local councillors and I can absolutely say how hardworking she is and, you know, you sort of bump into residents and I know firsthand the sort of work that Denise does there. So on behalf of Nelson residents, thank you, thank you very much and also for your sterling contributions in scrutiny debates with your excellent questioning. Gail, Gail is definitely no, well, there's no stronger champion for housing than Gail and the council will very much miss that. But also always ready and willing to offer a helping hand and to personally take on casework issues for colleagues, which I think is a sort of testament to the values that you bring when it comes to furthering your portfolio, so thank you very much for that. And finally to Alan, it's very much an end of an era, we've heard already, Alan has served the council and the city for 32 years or five decades, depending on how you want to deal with the maths, has a huge experience of local government, which he's used in leading this council for, I think, the last eight years. On a personal level, I would like to put on record the great working relationship that we have had. He's always been really willing to meet and talk over issues. I think even if sometimes he did think that when I got a request to come to the office, it was a bit like going, being summoned by the head teacher, but fortunately it always turned out to be perfectly fine. So thank you very much for your service that you've given the council and all the residents of Norwich in current and past and thank you for your, and I think there's this, perhaps the willingness for discourse that's helped foster the level of cross-party working that was referenced in the most recent, in the LGAP review that we've just had, so thank you. So thank you on behalf of the Lib Dem group to everyone that's stepping down and retiring today. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Wright. I'd like to invite the neighbourd councillors who are leaving us down into the central part of the chamber, I have a little but important parting gift for you. We often talk about badges of office, well, this is truly one, I'd like to present each of you with one. Right, before we go any further, are there any declarations of interest? Okay, these are, just the two we contacted. Yep, so we've noted those already. Nope, you need to clear them, you need to speak these words.
So item 11, because I'm a director of Norwich Regeneration Limited. And also I suspect on the motions, the motion about the walking centre, I need to declare a pecuniary interest there as the director of One Norwich Practices. And I'm probably gonna leave the chamber for both.
Yeah, thank you. And councillor Stute?
Yes, also item 11, as a director of the company and I'll leave the chamber for that item. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No, nope, great. So we're going to move now to item four on the agenda, which is questions from the public. We've received one public question and this is from Michael Howard. Mr Howard, would you please ask your question? You have three minutes in which to enunciate.
Thank you. Like many people sitting in this room, my family and I have benefited significantly from the services and support offered by the Walk-in Centre based on Rowan Road. This service offers an easy, simple opportunity for people to access primary care without an often lengthy wait for a doctor's appointment, which is particularly important for some marginalised groups within the city. I was therefore horrified to learn that the Norfolk County Wavine Integrated Care Board has begun a consultation on proposals for general medical services provision in Norwich when the current contract for the Walk-in Centre, the GP practice on Rowan Road and the vulnerable adults service expires on the 31st of March 2024. This could result in its closure, with a leader comment on whether this city council will support the campaign launched by local MP Clyde Lewis to keep the existing Walk-in Centre.
Thank you very much. Mr Howard, councillor Waters, will you please reply?
So thank you very much for your timely and urgent question, Mr Howard. Motion 13H in the names of councillors Jones and Giles on tonight's council agenda makes an overwhelming and compelling case for keeping the Norwich Walk-in Centre open. So I can assure you that the city council is fully behind the campaign, I know that would be all groups on the council, which has been launched by Clyde Lewis, MP for Norwich South and supported by Alice McDonald, the prospective Labour Party parliamentary candidate for Norwich North. The plain fact is that the closure of the Walk-in Centre wouldn't be cost effective, would add to the existing stream pressures on A and E and deny many patients timely treatment. I'm pleased to say that the campaign to save the Walk-in Centre and the vulnerable adult service is building strong momentum and if sustained, I believe, can save these vital facilities. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Waters. Mr Howard, you're allowed one supplementary question and I just want to remind, it's one and it is supplementary. If you have one, you have a minute in which to make it, go ahead.
Thank you. Can the leader comment on his views regarding the wider issues of the NHS, the government's agenda regarding health and recent industrial action?
Councillor Waters?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. It seems to me clear that this industrial action was not necessary. Government talked about inflation busting pay increases, except the pay increases were below the rate of inflation. This could be solved by political will and yet it won't be because what we see is the opportunity to put more pressure on the health service, to make it a service that can meet the needs of people in a timely way. And that seems to me to be part of an agenda to drive further prioritisation of the health service, which we've seen over the last 10 years escalate. So we must be in no doubt that the Conservative government has its own plans for the NHS and it is not a national health service, it's a privatised service and one which will undermine the most important public service that we have. So that is the view, having gone to the hospital for a couple of appointments, that's certainly the view of many of the nurses and medical staff that I've been in conversation with.
Thank you very much, councillor Waters. And thank you for such a precise supplementary question, Mr Howard. You're welcome to stay, feel no compunction to stay. Thank you very much. Petitions, we have a petition which is to be presented by, to the council by Mr Sean Gough. Mr Gough, will you please present your petition? You have five minutes in which to do so.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm here to present 1,138 signatures supporting a tree petition which is addressed to both city and county councils and it reads, "We, the undersigned, call on Norfolk County Council to give higher priority and more resources to replacing missing street trees and planting additional trees on highways land in Norwich, especially streets and grass verges. We also call on Norwich City Council to work closely with Norfolk County Council to develop a citywide strategy for increasing tree planting. Greater levels of tree planting and replacement of lost street trees in Norwich are vital for a healthy future. Trees are important for reducing carbon emissions and protecting the city from the effects of climate change. They also provide a vital wildlife habitat. In Nelson Ward, near where I live, the tree canopy cover could be as low as 13.5%. Residents feel strongly about trees and more than 50 have signed up as volunteer tree wardens. I welcome the fact that the city council will shortly publish a draft tree strategy for consultation. I hope that it will make trees a strategic priority to help meet the strategic goal of net zero and include targets and an action plan for increasing tree cover to 25%. As a regular visitor to Erham Cemetery, I have seen the loss of beech and ash trees and in our streets I see many tree stumps and empty tree pits. Nelson has 70 missing trees, but the county plans to replace just nine this year. It is regrettable that the city council did not retain responsibility for trees on highways land. The county highways department currently views street trees as a highways maintenance safety risk to be managed at minimum cost and not as a resource for addressing climate change. More generally, inadequate space has been made for trees in Norwich as the city has grown and not enough money has been dedicated to planting new tree standards of two metres in height and ensuring their survival as the climate warns. In support of a tree strategy, an increase in core annual funding from council budgets is required for planting tree standards on land in the council's ownership. In 2020 and 2021, the council spent a miniscule £9,471 on purchasing such trees. The council has used other funds, such as section 106 and levelling up for replanting trees of North Ireland woodlands and Wentson Park woodlands. Tree seedlings used for block planting are not generally suitable for urban conditions outside of woodlands, however. The council should also explore other sources of funding, such as neighbourhood community infrastructure levy and parish partnerships. However, it is the council annual core funding element for large tree standards which is particularly critical and so I hope that the draft strategy will commit to more resources for planting and maintaining trees." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Gough. Councillor Giles, would you please respond to the petition?
Apologies, Lord Mayor. Thank you very much for the petition, it's greatly appreciated. The council has around 316,500 trees on our land in the city. Our trees have an asset value of approximately £184 million, based on their economic, social and environmental benefits, such as carbon capture, filtration of airborne pollutants, flood alleviation, temperature reduction and increased biodiversity. The council is finalising its draft tree strategy, which will ensure that we continue to maximise the value of trees in the city. Partnership working with the county council will be essential in achieving the aims of the strategy and we will continue to work with them to maximise the benefits that trees in the city can deliver. We will apply for the Urban Tree Challenge Fund and the local authorities' Treescapes Fund to secure the necessary funding to achieve the aims of our strategy. This will sit alongside developer contributions in the form of biodiversity net gain contributions, SIL, as has been mentioned, and JIRAM's payments, as well as our fantastic HRA, Housing Revenue Account Estate Aesthetics Programme. Our environmental strategy team have been working in conjunction with the Greenhouse Trust to get residents and community groups involved in 7,000 plus, an ambitious project to plant 7,000 trees in Norwich by 2030.
Thank you councillor Giles. Mr Gough, if you'd like to approach, I will receive the petition on behalf of the city. And Mr Gough, you too are welcome to stay or go, there's no compunction, we won't lock the doors on either side. Thank you. We now come to the usual business. Item five, the minutes of the previous meeting held. I call upon councillor Waters to move the minutes of the meeting held on the 21st of January 2020.
Move for the last time, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councillor Galvin, I call upon you to second the minutes. Seconded. Thank you very much. Yeah, it is, did somebody else notice that? Deliberate error. For some reason, my copy, special copy for the Lord Mayor's got the wrong date on. February, yes, 23rd of February, but they're still moved. Thank you very much, we'll move to a vote now. All those who are accepting the minutes as a true record, please raise your hand. That's okay, just juggle it around to keep it interesting. Anybody wish to stay on this? Those in favour of accepting the minutes as a true record? Thank you. Right, we're coming to a fine set of questions to cabinet members. I say this from my heart and for everyone else who's here, we have a lot of business to get through this evening, so please, when it comes to your supplementary, remember one question and it's supplementary, i.e. within that area. And keep it as short as possible, please. First question from councillor Matthew Fulton-Bat, no, no, again, I've got a good set. Councillor Galvin?
Thank you for your answer councillor Waters, but I don't have a supplementary, thank you.
Thank you very much. Way to go. Question two from councillor Cat. Councillor Cat, do you have a supplementary question?
Yeah, I do, thank you.
Please go ahead.
You'll be pleased that this is quite short, but thank you for your answer, but I'll take that as a no. Is that correct?
Thank you very much, councillor Waters.
On this occasion, yes, it is, but I hope you would acknowledge, I expect you to acknowledge the fact that when you brought the motion on this issue, that the work that was done recognised the arguments that you made to make sure that we were acknowledging the importance of trans community in the city. And I suppose the final point I would make is, you know, the steps in City Hall are a place of remembrance and solidarity on a number of issues. And I think that the colleagues, the people who went to that event for this young woman, this young trans person, woman, would recognise the solidarity with that tragic loss. So thank you for all your work that you've done in this area, appreciate it.
Thank you very much, councillor Waters. Question three was from councillor Shmira. We've received apologies, so there will be no supplementary question for, from councillor Hayes. Councillor Hayes, do you have a supplementary question?
Just wanted to ask, do you know how many repairs have not been completed due to contractors not being able to access and what the cost of this has been to the council?
Thank you. Reply.
No, not to hand, I will find that data for you. This is a question that sits very much on the intersection between my portfolio, housing and some other areas, so I don't have it to hand, but I will talk to colleagues and officers and find that out for you.
Question five from councillor Graham. Councillor Graham, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. There have been at least two accidents with US nuclear weapons on Rishysoil, both at Lakenheath in Suffolk. In 1956, a bomber careered out of control and ploughed into a bomb dump housing nuclear weapons, tearing it apart. The bomber exploded and threw burning fuel over all three nuclear weapons. One official US cable reported that it was a miracle that one bomb with exposed detonators didn't explode. These were just two of the 20 nuclear blunders that the MoD was forced to reveal in 2003. Since then, there's been a plane crash in 2020 which killed the pilot and in future, nuclear weapons are likely to be flown in and will certainly not be announced. So will the cabinet press the MoD to inform our emergency planning manager and the Norfolk Resilience Forum if nuclear weapons are returned to Lakenheath?
Thank you very much. Councillor Waters?
Yes, I'll make that, I'll make that request. I mean, the broader point is that you can have as many safety features as you like, but those events where a plane carrying a nuclear device fails, something goes wrong, something unpredictable, something not expected, you see these kind of disasters happening in all sorts of areas. And frankly, the only solution to avoid such potentially disastrous accidents and consequences is not to have any nuclear weapons.
My point exactly, thank you for making it.
Thank you very much, councillor Waters. Councillor Carle, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Giles for your response. In 2016, Forest Research established a tree canopy coverage baseline for 363 towns and cities in the UK using their eye tree methodology and they published their results. Has the council been in contact with Forest Research to discuss the difference in the council's methodology, which has produced different results?
Thank you very much, councillor Carle. Councillor Giles?
I've set out the methodology that was used by the natural Norfolk team at Norfolk County Council while doing the survey work on tree canopy cover for the biodiversity strategy and Greater Norwich Green Infrastructure Strategy. I will speak to the arboricultural team leader about the Forest Research methodology and get back to you in writing.
Thank you very much. Councillor Giles? Councillor Osborne, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, thank you. Thank you councillor Harris, your response doesn't actually answer my question, which is about the oversight of the contract maintenance. It's not just this issue with the maintenance of the street lamps, it has looked close, but for example, also the maintenance of the... but for example also the maintenance of the windows and the doors in that sort of flagship passive house development, but it doesn't seem to be an overview of who is managing those contracts, so that's what I'd like to know, please.
Thank you very much. Councillor Osborne. Councillor Harris?
So, I will go back to the street lighting because, as you know, being a county councillor, when we lost the joint highways, it was a blow to the city, and it's been, it's not just with lighting that it's been the problem. In regards to the passive house development and who's responsible for it, I hadn't heard that there was a particular issue, I must admit, so I will go back to the project manager and raise the issue with him, but, you know, if residents report fault, we will find out who needs to do it, so I, you know, I can't, you know, it is a very new technology, we know that sometimes residents are having to learn how to use the systems, but we also know that sometimes with any new development, there will be issues, you know, whether it's a small cracking in the ceiling, it happens, so I will certainly go back to the project manager and ask him to confirm with you.
Thank you very much.
I thought you might have done, but, you know, I didn't like to say that, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Saved me the problem though of doing it for you.
Question eight from councillor Price. Councillor Price, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Thank you, thanks for the response, leader. I know that you talk about the cabinet and this point will be considered later. The question asked for your opinion, your opinion on whether or not councillors should be on the boards of these companies that we run and own, or should they not, as best practice says, what's your opinion?
Thank you very much. Councillor Waters?
So I would look through that, through the optic of what is the most effective way to run a company, and the role of elected members clearly is going to be important in terms of oversight, and where is the best contribution that members can make within that structure. So the corporate challenge raised that as an issue, it's certainly been in our mind as we develop these new structures, you know, there's a process to go through, there's a process of understanding how best to deploy that, so the views that you raised are not dissimilar to my views around this, we just need to test it out, but I know that it'll be something that the Order Committee will also give their considered opinion to in due course.
Thank you very much councillor Waters. Question asked from councillor Young. Councillor Young, do you have a supplementary question?
Not at this point, no, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Boglein, have you a supplementary?
Yes, please. So, the answer to my question and the answer to the previous two questions talks about looking at the recommendations of the peer review very closely in the near future, there are a lot of important recommendations, I would just like to understand a little bit more how the acting on these recommendations will be scrutinised, will an update be coming to a particular committee, how will we know which ones you've picked out, which ones you've acted on and at what speed, please?
Thank you very much.
Could I answer that question? Obviously, we'll be coming back to committees of this council and I'm sure the whole council, the feedback and resolutions from this particular peer review group, I can't moan give you a complete timetable, but I can assure you that they will be thoroughly reviewed and the members will also, I'm sure, have a chance to actually comment upon any deliberations that are considered by them.
Thank you very much councillor Kendrick. Next question is from councillor Matthew McCallister. Do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Lord Mayor. I'd like to ask councillor Waters if he'll spend his remaining five weeks of his five decades in office campaigning and reaffirming trade union rights within the city, and to commit to campaigning for the repeal of all Tory anti-trade union legislation that we've seen so far introduced under this awful government.
Thank you very much councillor Fulton McCallister. Councillor Waters?
Well, I will have a few other things to do, but I will make this a top priority.
Thank you. Question twelve from councillor Pete. Councillor Pete, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Thank you councillor Oliver for your written response. It's grand in CCTV to tackle this problem, thanks to the extra hard-won investment achieved by the recent budget last month. Is it a real boost for both my community and Norwich to help catch perpetrators caught on camera? Would you consider all options, including sharing such images on a wall of shame?
Thank you very much councillor Pete. Councillor Oliver?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillor Pete, yes, absolutely, so the £100,000 budget amendment, which was passed recently at some budget meeting on 21st of February of this year, is significant, sorry, a significant investment, and it will contribute to all sorts of measures up to and including expanding CCTV to tackle the problem, absolutely would consider sharing images on a wall of shame, would personally prefer to call it a rogues' gallery. I'd also suggest that in the meantime, until we have the cameras in situ, that anything that's observed out of the ordinary can be reported in online, so please keep your eyes peeled and report fly tipping, thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Oliver, question thirteen from councillor Vivian Thomas, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Giles, I am very pleased that Wensham Park will benefit from this hard-won investment on top of the brilliant new play equipment recently installed and publicised in the evening news. Can you set out how the Norwich Fringe Project works with volunteers and other groups such as TCV to maximise capacity to maintain and enhance our natural areas across Norwich?
Thank you very much. Councillor Giles, would you like to reply?
Thank you for the supplementary. The Norwich Fringe Project has a team of approximately 20 excellent direct volunteers who assist our staff on Wednesdays and Thursdays each week in maintaining our nature reserves and county wildlife sites in the city. The Fringe Project also has an excellent partnership with TCV, the conservation volunteers, who contribute approximately 40 days per year of volunteering. This is in addition to the many friends groups across the city who do brilliant work to maintain and enhance many natural area sites across Norwich. We owe a significant debt of gratitude to those residents who volunteer their services, would encourage many more to do so, resulting in significant cost savings to the council and enhanced sense of community spirit and ownership of these natural areas.
Thank you very much for your reply. Question fourteen, councillor Kidman. Councillor Kidman, do you have a supplementary question?
I do, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Hampton for your reply. Your reply highlights the £290 million investment that the council has announced for improved energy efficiency in our social housing up to 2050, and how the council will lead the citywide responses to, while we're doing all we can within the resources available to this council, do you not agree that there is a critical and paramount role for central government to assist in this? And if so, what could they do?
Thank you very much. Councillor Hampton, do you have a reply?
Thank you councillor Kidman for the question, and it's an especially timely one considering the Chancellor will deliver his spring statement tomorrow, which will give the opportunity to the government to set out a proper plan to tackle fuel poverty and the cost of living crisis that underpins it, should they choose to, but the top line of course is that, yes, the government have a really critical role to play in this. This council's sustainable warmth strategy contains a commitment statement that says we will aim to eradicate fuel poverty in Norwich within the timescale of 2040 city vision, and as my answer notes and your question reflects, we're doing all we can within the resources available to us to get there, but the only surefire way of meeting this ambitious goal is proper and sustained action from the government, that's action to offer support, reform the energy market, increase household income, retrofit homes and secure a clean energy future to tackle the immediate crises we're facing. Tomorrow, the Chancellor must scrap the planned energy bill price hike and introduce additional financial support, especially for the most vulnerable groups. We need an enhanced windfall tax on the profits of oil and gas giants with loopholes closed to make sure that these companies and not people are paying for this, and there needs to be an accelerated programme of home upgrades in order to improve energy efficiency on a worst-first basis to cut both bills and carbon emissions. Sustainable, long-term solutions are urgently required too, and I won't dwell on this because we may or may not be able to discuss it later this time, but we've tabled our motion in support of the Energy Equity Committee Bill or Energy for All campaign, and if passing to law, this would give everyone a universal free basic amount of energy according to their need, enough to cover essentials and would go as far as possible to eradicating fuel poverty in our city and country, so this is ultimately what we'd want the government to do.
Thank you very much councillor Hampton. Question fifteen, councillor Everett sent apologies. Can I just say without looking at anybody that, please give the person asking the question and the person replying the opportunity to speak without interruption. You may not realise it, but the construction of this chamber is such that I can hear side comments and whispers, and no doubt others can as well, so please let this question and answer session continue. If you do need to discuss things with colleagues, there are three great big doors there. Question sixteen, councillor Driver, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Lord Mayor, thank you. Can I thank your reply councillor Jones, tackling antisocial behaviour is a top priority. Can you see the threat to see helping us further expand our investment in the CCTV, other gates and other practical and positive measures to both tackle antisocial behaviour and crime?
Thank you very much. Councillor Jones, would you like to reply?
Thank you councillor Driver for that supplementary. Yes, I am really excited where we go forward with this strategy and in terms of verbing our action plan, and it comes alongside, we're already making big strides within particularly ASB, in the ASB team in tackling issues across the city, I'd like to say, you know, we've got an order through new, set through new CCTV cameras, and they're a more modern option, which should make them a lot easier to deploy, and if those, we've done quite a lot of research around it, but we're hoping these will be great, and if they're what we're hoping when they arrive, then we'll be placing an order for some, a further set. We've done some increased training in the ASB team, which is responding really well, and I think having this strategy is kind of the next step forward from what has been quite a, some really significant improvements in the team that I think they should be incredibly proud of, and I am as the portfolio holder of their work. I was just thinking of a snapshot of the last six months, where we've had two full closure orders, four notices seeking possession, one injunction, 13 community protection awardings and nine community protection notices, and I think that's a real statement of actually we're not afraid to take action. What the community safety strategy then brings us is that opportunity to work in partnership, which is dealing with the more holistic stuff that relates to ASB, so, because there are all sorts of complicating social factors alongside that, so yes, we will continue to invest because this is stuff that has a fundamental impact on people's health and wellbeing, if you must, that's it, I've lived next to significant issues of ASB myself and know what impact it has, so it continues to be a priority for this administration. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Question seventeen from councillor Vaughan Thomas, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, Lord Mayor, thank you. Thank you councillor Oliver. Your list of positives that we have delivered by those councillors on the planning committee choosing to help homeless people over a dead ashtray on Kets Hill has been a priority, which has led to homes actually being built. Having sat on the planning committee for some years now, I have sadly seen councillors campaign against similar types of developments, including Lakenfields and somewhere safe to stay, Hope on McCordagh Road, building new council housing on Northumberland Street where I live, and now at Kets Hill. Do you worry that the strategy to reduce homelessness may come to a shuddering halt, creating more street homeless if councillors don't prioritise homeless people in our community?
Thank you very much councillor Vaughan Thomas. Councillor Oliver, would you like to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, thank you councillor Vaughan Thomas, so then, yes, I absolutely do share your concerns, I was delighted with councillor Harris to go to see the new homes on Kets Hill, about 10 days or a couple of weeks ago, they really are something, and look forward to seeing the first people moving in, and, you know, for them to have a warm welcome from local councillors and beyond. We have a pipeline of further developments, as per my written response, we've secured funding for 15 open market houses purchases, we've made 15 housing first improvements to property already in our stock, but the recent Kets Hill project is in partnership with Broadland Housing, and I just, I want to say that partnership working is the way forward, and if we can't partner with all councillors and get the support, then we won't be able to provide homes for people in the way that we need to, we're a city, a city in all its glorious diversity, and people need somewhere to live, or we will be seeing more people on the streets.
Thank you very much councillor Oliver. We'll just wait for people to cease their conversations. Question eighteen, councillor Brochett Coulton, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Jones for your reply, I know from talking to residents who have benefited from alley gates fitted to their homes, how much safer they feel. Given over 100 homes have now been protected, will you commit to continue to support the alley gate programme, and do you have hopes for its future growth in the years ahead?
Would you like to reply? Councillor Jones?
Thank you for your supplementary. Yes, I'd be very keen to commit to this going forward, I just was reflecting back in my head, I saw this question coming back to over 15 years ago when I was lucky enough to benefit from an alley gate under a previous scheme, and I remember the former MP for Norwich South, Charles Clark, coming to open the gate for the first time when I lived on Alexander Road, but actually, you know, the practicality to that was, we lost four bikes from our shed before then and couldn't get to work, actually, this was installed with a sense of safety it gave me, and how much money it saved me as well, but actually, that real practical solution that it gives people, and it's something we can do, and I'm really keen that, it's an important thing, we've expanded the programme so that it includes repairs to gates such as those, like the ones that I benefited from back when I lived on Alexander Road, that, you know, are maybe needing a bit of TLC now, and actually, we want to keep those functioning, so we can, we can use some of that money to repair them because, you know, why replace if we can repair it? But yeah, really keen to see it going forward, thank you.
Question eighteen from councillor Huntley. Councillor Huntley, do you have a supplementary question?
Yes, Lord Mayor, I do. Thank you councillor Stonehead for your response, it's great to hear that Limekiln Muse is potentially to be acquired if the private owner does undertake a development forward. It's a big site, and if it were to be owned by this Labour council, we could potentially build many new council homes upon it at some future point, helping to address the housing crisis. Could you confirm that all options, including this, will be considered?
Councillor Stonehead, would you like to reply?
Thank you for your supplementary question councillor Huntley. Yes, I can confirm that this administration is eager, well, actually not eager, straining at the bit, I would say, to build more council homes in the city, both to meet the dire need and to give working people the opportunity to escape the excesses of the private rented sector. So for this site, all options do indeed remain on the table if purchased by the council, and I can further reassure you that we would be very keen to see high-quality, purpose-built council homes of the quality built at Goldsmith Street and on the former King's Arms site, built on the Limekiln site in Norwood.
Thank you very much councillor Stonehead. Question twenty from councillor Mike Sands, do you have a supplementary question?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, yes, I do. Thank you councillor Kendrick for your reply. The legislation introduced by this government is iniquitous and suppressing of voters, but can you give your comments and views over what this government has done, not only what this government has done, but also how we can best support constituents as what this government has done, but also how we can best support constituents adversely affected by this enormous change in voter requirements?
Right.
Thank you councillor Sands for your supplementary question. Can I say that I personally consider this to be a very retrogressive measure? It is aimed at both suppressing to reduce the level of turnout, especially amongst the poorest, minority and younger people. And it's very much come straight from the Republican playbook in the southern states of America, where this has been practiced for some time. However, I would say first of all, there is signs after, even in states like Georgia, it's been counterproductive and especially African Americans really resent the idea that they can be returned to the days of Jim Crow when they were denied their democratic rights. And in fact, we have seen actually an increased turnout in states such as Georgia. We must encourage our own constituents to actually know the kind of identification they need to bring to a polling station and encourage them to do so. And obviously also try and encourage them to take up postal votes.
Thank you very much councillor Kendrick. Question twenty-one from councillor Erin Fulton McAllister, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, please, Lord Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Thank you. And last time I'm going to do this. And so you're definitely getting one from me. So thank you councillor Stonehead for your reply. I'm pleased to hear that the retail picture in the city is more positive than perhaps some might want us to believe. Thinking of the reasons behind this, will you agree that Norwich has a unique offer that gives us a real advantage as a city? Keeping retail space will be key to this. So can you comment further too on the importance of the Article Four directive and other steps the city council is taking, working with the bid to better safeguard this?
Thank you very much councillor Fulton McAllister. Councillor Stonehead, good to have you.
Yes, thank you councillor Fulton McAllister for your final supplementary question of your current career here. And I'd just like to agree that despite the retail sector nationally having a very challenging time over the past several years, due to the rise of online shopping and hastened by the pandemic and worsened by the very negative prevailing economic conditions brought about by torious economic mismanagement, which has been disastrous. Norwich has consistently bucked the negative national trends and data for retail space and city centre football. Footfall. I beg your pardon, that was a Freudian slip. I sometimes wonder whether the negative naysayers ever leave Norfolk and whether they visit the many other almost ghost towns and cities, some not so far from here, which tell a very different story. So we can be proud here, but not complacent about our record here. And I agree, we do have a unique offer in the city. The recent Article Four directive, the result of a successful application to central government by this council, will further enable us to protect the vibrancy of the city centre economy by protecting another vital sector, the office economy. The government's relaxation of planning laws and regulations, which led to the automatic right to transfer city centre office space into residential accommodation, has led to a consistent diminution of city centre office space, part of the lifeblood of the complex interdependent city centre economy. It also risked the creation of substandard residential accommodation in buildings which were originally designed for an entirely different purpose. However, thanks to the action of this administration, that automatic right of transport from office to residential has been removed in key parts of the city, enabling us to protect our office economy where necessary and to prevent the creation of substandard residential accommodation. So this is a double win for the people of the city and this to be celebrated. And I'll just finish by saying, we are at the moment in Norwich attracting significant inward investment in the retail sector and leisure centre, which again is to be welcomed.
Thank you very much councillor Stonehead. Question twenty is from councillor Sue Sands, do you have a supplementary?
Yes, I do, Lord Mayor.
Please go ahead.
Thank you for your answer councillor Stonehead. Walking past the Hay Hill, I am always struck by how old and tired it looks and that it is a poor image for our city, particularly for visitors. The proposed improvements now passed by planning will breathe new life into this area, but I am interested to know your views on the hoped advantages it will bring to the increasing trade in the city centre, but also create a pleasant and safe place for people to enjoy the ambience of our city.
Thank you very much. Would you like to reply? Councillor Stonehead?
Thank you councillor Sands for your supplementary question. We know that an important part of the vibrancy and economic success of the city centre is the high-quality public space. And this council has been creating such spaces which are pedestrian-friendly and encourage people to linger and enjoy them since we pedestrianised the first street in the UK in 1967. As such, we've been gradually and successfully reclaiming city centre streets from the private fossil fuel car and creating safe, attractive, pollution-free environments for visitors to enjoy. We know that this encourages footfall and the amount of time visitors and shoppers spend in the city centre. There's a mountain of data which demonstrates this. And as a consequence, we're bucking national trends, as I just said, for footfall and vacant space. Hay Hill is the latest improvement, replacing concrete clutter and many levels with a disability-friendly welcoming space where people can relax, linger, maybe watch a performance or simply enjoy the greenery and the water feature. And long may we continue with similar developments to the benefit of the city centre economy.
Thank you very much councillor Stonehead. Question twenty-three from councillor Padda, do you have a supplementary?
I do, thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Oliver earlier. My question builds on councillor Thomas's question earlier this evening. It is clear that by voting through and building the specialist housing needed, coupled with investing in highly effective support services crucial to maintaining tenancies, we can continue to reduce rough sleeping in Norwich. Could you comment on what would have happened with the state of homelessness and rough sleeping if we had not voted through the budget last month?
Thank you very much councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you councillor Padda. Yes, so building on my response earlier on, on Saturday night, I volunteered at the Winter Night Shelter, which has been running since November, was just another layer of support for people facing street homelessness. And I would really hate to think what would happen to some of the people that I met there if we weren't able to support them with move-on, you know, through our partnership working, through pathways. When we see rough sleepers on the streets, the count last November revealed seven people, obviously seven people, seven people too many, but we have bucked the national trend in that that is a significant decrease. I think in 2016, we recorded thirty-four people sleeping on the streets of Norwich. And we know that this is likely to be a problem. We know that this is going to be something that many people are facing, given what's happening, given what the national picture is. It's even more important that we continue to provide as much support as we can and work flexibly with people. And of course, we need the resources to do so. So it's only by voting and voting through our budgets and supporting that, that we can continue to do that year on year, as long as it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Oliver. Second questions have been received from councillors Cat and Carlo. More than thirty minutes have elapsed since the starting questions, and so in line with the council constitution, these questions will not be taken. Now come to item seven, nominations for Lord Mayor and Sheriff. I call upon councillor Waters to move item seven.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I will speak about the nomination for Lord Mayor and my colleague councillor Harris will speak about the nomination for Sheriff in seconding this item. So I would like to nominate for Lord Mayor for the new civic year, obviously subject to the AGM of the council in May, councillor James Wright. James has been a councillor, first elected in 2010. He has served as Deputy Lord Mayor on three occasions. He has a track record of community activity. He's a governor of two schools since 2008. And he is also a coordinator of the junior park run at Eton Park. He also uses his expertise and we know his expertise in IT, asks very pertinent technical questions at cabinet meetings, among other places, and providing that support to schools. And his cheering skills, honed by many years of cheering the scrutiny committee, will serve him well in cheering for council meetings. So I'm delighted to recommend or nominate councillor James Wright as the Lord Mayor for the forthcoming civic year.
Thank you very much councillor Waters. So another park runner. I call upon councillor Harris to second the item.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. It's my pleasure to second the nominations for Lord Mayor and Sheriff. Councillor Waters has asked me to concentrate on speaking about the nomination for Sheriff. However, I cannot miss the opportunity of wishing councillor James Wright all the best when he undertakes the role of Lord Mayor for the forthcoming civic year. When councillor Waters asked me to speak in support of the nomination of Dr Jan Sheldon as Sheriff, I thought back to the freedom of the city which we awarded to St Martin's Housing Trust last November. In this chamber, we are all aware of the tremendous contribution that St Martin's makes to this city. Their mission is to maximise independent living and prevent homelessness in our community by offering a hand-up, housing, support and care to the most vulnerable, to enhance understanding and compassion towards homeless people in our community through education and advocacy. We are fortunate to have a jewel in the crown when it comes to St Martin's Housing Trust. And it has to be recognised that this is under the special leadership of Dr Jan Sheldon. Jan, during her time as Chief Executive, has pushed the boundaries of innovation with meeting housing needs and no challenge has been too difficult for her or her amazing team staff. Jan's qualities as a leader are therefore all to see, and this will translate into Jan taking on the role of Sheriff of this fine city. I know that Jan will be a fantastic ambassador, will enjoy the networking and will bring a wealth of experience to the role. I simply cannot think of anybody more suitable for the role of Sheriff. And I consider it an honour that in my last full council meeting, I am able to second the nominations for both Lord Mayor and Sheriff. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Harris. I now invite group spokespersons, councillor Osborn, would you like to speak for the Green Party?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Congratulations to your last Lord Mayorship meeting. I'd like to echo the warm words that councillor Waters and councillor Harris have made about the excellent candidates for Lord Mayor and Sheriff. And I'm sure they'll do us as a council and more importantly, as a city, very proud. My main experience of councillor Wright has been in his role as Chair of the Scrutiny Committee. And I have to say that his fairness and his breadth of knowledge of the issues affecting the city are very much apparent and they've earned the respect of all councillors and members of the public and officers. And you can see that in the way that the scrutiny operates. And I think that's really to be applauded and I think he'll be an excellent Lord Mayor. And I think I can speak for everyone in this council when I say that the work that Jan Sheldon and St Martin's do is one of the finest representatives of values of our city. I and my colleagues have seen from experience working with St Martin's in our wards, that the kindness and the commitment and the hard work and the care that they provide for some of the most vulnerable people and providing not just a home, but more than a home for those people in Norwich. And I cannot think of a better representative to hold the post of Sheriff. So I really look forward to seeing what these two bring next year.
Thank you very much. Councillor Osborn? Councillor Ackroyd, would you like to speak on behalf of the Lib Dems?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm so pleased to have the opportunity to speak on the nominations for Lord Mayor and Sheriff. I can say with absolutely no fear of getting my facts wrong, that above everyone here tonight, I have known councillor Wright the longest, having first met him face-to-face in the very early hours of a Saturday morning in June 1975. You might say that in some way, this biases me towards supporting his nomination. Equally, of course, it might do the reverse. However, I have absolutely no hesitation in supporting his nomination. At the very least, his slightly odd, obsessive knowledge of the constitution will come to the fore as he chairs council meetings. Having lived here all his life, attending Avenue, well, apart from going to work in London, but generally coming home again in the evening, as far as I can remember, attending Avenue First and Middle Schools, Earlham High School, he's been a councillor for thirteen years. He is very proud of his Norwich roots and I know would relish the opportunity to serve Norwich as Lord Mayor. Equally, I'm very honoured to be able to support Dr Jan Sheldon's nomination as Sheriff. She heads a remarkable organisation, as we heard recently when St Martin's was given the freedom of the city. As we've already heard, she is herself a truly remarkable woman who is doing inspirational work as she works with staff and partners, leading St Martin's into ever greater and more important areas and able to support so many people in a variety of ways. Her work does not end in meetings, of course. She's out in the community, infusing those she meets and pulling them into supporting the work. She will be a brilliant ambassador for Norwich and I think we can look forward to a good civic year. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ackroyd. Bearing in mind the time, do any of the councillors wish to speak? Councillor Waters, would you like to respond?
Well, delighted with the warm comments that have been made about both our nominees and councillor Ackroyd's particular special knowledge. We'll tip this over the line, I'm sure, when it comes to the group, the council AGM. So I think all there's left to say is congratulations to both of our new civic team and I think they deserve a round of applause.
We'll now move to the vote on that. All those who are in favour? Any unanimous? Unanimous, you're okay. Item eight, appointment of the interim Chief Exec, Head of Paid Service, Returning Officer and Electoral Registration Officer. I call upon councillor Waters to move item eight.
So one of the most important things about change is continuity. And this report puts in place a range of interim arrangements around the interim Chief Executive, which is proposed to be one of our directors, Louise Ralston. She has significant experience from previous jobs and she has been a very effective director since her appointment at City Hall. I'm not going to go into frankly, any further detail because colleagues will have read the report. Clearly, it means a number of organisational changes, backfilling, transfer of functions as laid out in the recommendations. There is a reference to the process for the appointing of a new Chief Executive, which will take place in April of this year. So without further ado, obviously, the colleagues will have any comments or observations, if there are any points I need to pick up and write, rounding up remarks, I can do them then. So I move the recommendations, Lord Mayor, on page fifteen.
Thank you very much councillor Waters. I call upon councillor Kendrick to second this item.
Yes, I would second it. I just wish to say, wish Louise the best of good fortunes in her new role, but also can I express my absolute confidence in her ability to fulfil this, the best of her ability.
Thank you. Thank you very much councillor Kendrick. Group spokespersons, councillor Bogdan, would you like to speak on behalf of the Green Party?
Thank you, yeah, I'll keep this short as well. Louise has shown in the last two years that her background in housing was a really crucial factor in uncovering the compliance issues and we've been very happy with the work we did with her on the antisocial behaviour response. Louise is extremely pleasant to work with and we have all confidence in her holding the fort until a permanent Chief Executive is being appointed. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Bogdan. Councillor Rive, would you like to speak on behalf of the Lib Dems?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Based on working with Lou, I have absolutely no doubt that she'd be ideally placed to take on the role of interim Chief Exec. I'd particularly like to thank her for taking the time to already give us a very comprehensive briefing on the backfill arrangements. So absolutely have confidence in her. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do any of the councillors wish to speak? No. Councillor Waters, would you like to respond? Um, councillor Waters, would you like to respond?
Thank you for the supportive comments, um, very helpful, so I'm happy that we move to the recommendations.
So we'll now move to the vote. All those who are in favour? So that's unanimous. We now move to item nine, the pay policy statement. I call upon councillor Waters to move item nine.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I will be, um, concise on this, um, item also. So this is a statutory requirement to produce a and publish a pay policy statement annually. It, uh, always falls at our March meeting. Um, City Council is committed to accountability and transparency in its pay as well as equity in its pay policy, and I would draw your attention to, in particular, um, the, uh, pages, um, on, uh, page twenty-nine of our papers, it's page six of the report in the appendix A, general principles applied to remuneration of all employees, and that covers, uh, areas, um, like the living wage. We have long been, uh, committed to ensuring that people are paid a living wage even before the living wage was, um, a campaigning activity with low-paid supplements paid, uh, from the nineteen eighties onwards. Um, one of the most important markers, I think, is the ratio between the highest and lower paid employees, and i- in terms of pay multiples on page five of the report, page twenty-eight of our council papers, um, the ratio between the highest paid employee and other employees based on the median earning is at one point, just under one point five, ratio of one to five, and the highest and lowest ratio, um, is the ratio of just under one to seven. And that's particularly important because the Hutton Fair Pay Review was asked to consider this, um, uh, the maximum pay multiple in the public sector. His interim report, um, in twenty-ten suggested a maximum multiple of a ratio of one to twenty in the public sector. Now, we are, um, well, uh, beneath that, um, and that's been a consistent pattern actually through the last decade. So, um, further, further points I would just simply, um, highlight, but actually specifically is on the last page of the report, which is the gender pay gap, and the gender pay gap for Norwich City Council is zero. And I would recommend that colleagues, um, do have a look at the, uh, information about Norwich on the gender pay gap service, the, uh, email, the, the web address is there, and, um, it tells a very strong story. So, uh, Lord Mayor, with those, um, salient points, um, I move the recommendations of this report.
Thank you very much, councillor Waters. I call upon councillor Harris to second this item.
Always second the motion or the paper and reserve the right to speak.
Thank you very much. And our group spokespersons, councillor Graham, would you like to speak on behalf?
Thank you, Lord. I'll be, I'll be brief because I think we're all agreed, and I don't want to waste council time that would stop us to getting to the important motions later on. Keeping the council in good shape is one of our core aims, and that means paying people properly and treating them fairly. What a shame our NHS bosses and those in charge of privatised industries don't seem to have this in hand. A note with a smile, paragraph four E, which, as Alan alluded to, is about, um, the pay ratios. It says, "The ratio of the highest and lowest pay points has improved from one point seven four to one point six." I agree wholeheartedly that a lower pay ratio is a big improvement, and I wish we could take it for granted that everybody in all parties would see it our way and would be so positive about achieving greater equality. I'm also pleased to commend that, um, that we pay people mileage, and it's a great example of embedding our climate and public health goals into our policy and practice, and I'm happy to see flexible retirement positively offered. Paying a real living wage is, is equally and uncontroversially a necessary act of decency. I'm old enough to remember being ridiculed for even suggesting a ten-hour minimum wage and then a maximum wage expressed as a pay ratio, and now we have them. That's not anything to be complacent about. In-work poverty is increasingly widespread, demoralising and miserable, and government appears deaf to this well-known fact. I appreciate that Norwich works hard to protect our own hard-working officers and contractors from the wolf at the door, our staff are our residents too. Although there's always room for improvement, I think we're doing the best we can for now, and we'll be supporting this policy.
Thank you very much, councillor Graham. Councillor Wright, would you like to speak on behalf of the Lib Dems?
Yeah, thank you very much, Lord Mayor. Without, um, repeating, uh, too much of what we've already heard, which I'd like to associate myself with, I'd just like to pick up on one point, and that is that I'm absolutely delighted to see that the policy now reflects, um, reimbursement for the use of bikes. Um, I recall in my speech to this meeting last year, I, I suggested, wouldn't it be great if we could, um, take a similar line to that at the county council? And I, I really would like to thank, um, officers in cabinet for taking on board the, uh, the, the, that particular sentiment, and we've now got this, this policy to enable staff members to be reimbursed for, for using their pushbike rather than a car, which I think is absolutely fantastic, and, um, uh, where possible, I will be using my pushbike if I can on my, uh, Lord Mayor duties, uh, rather than relying on taxi.
Flowing robes. Thank you very much, councillor Wright. Um, do any of the members wish to speak? Yeah, please go ahead.
Clarify, may Lord Mayor. Um, I just want to highlight, these discussions can often be incredibly dry, but actually these are what pay people's bills. When we're increasing, um, the pay, all pay points by one thousand nine hundred and twenty-five pounds, that actually goes significantly more into the pockets of the lowest paid employees this council has, and that's one of the key reasons why the pay ratios have dropped, um, because we are putting money into the lowest paid member of staff's pockets rather than, uh, just bringing down top levels of pay, and that's particularly important to note. The other thing I wanted to highlight and commend the council for was our commitment, um, to avoid bringing in, um, uh, performance-related pay, which does not encourage council staff to work harder. Council staff are publicly minded individuals and do not work harder because they're going to get a pay rise at the end of the day. They work hard because they care about the jobs they do, and it's really good that we acknowledge that.
Thank you very much, councillor. Full of character, um, yes, good words. Anyone else? Councillor Waters, would you like to respond?
grateful for colleagues', um, comments, highlighting some of the, the features of our, our, our pay policy and, uh, the contextualised framework for that, and so I'm happy to move to, um, the, the recommendation to approve the council's pay policy statement, the twenty-three, twenty-four.
Thank you very much. All those who are in favour, please raise your hand. That's unanimous. Constitutional amendments. Terms of reference for licensing regulatory committees and subcommittees. I call upon councillor Kendrick to move item ten.
Uh, thank you, Lord Mayor. I appreciate that today's agenda is long and we've almost reached nine-thirty, and of course we still have the motions to go, so we'll not go into too much, uh, detail in regards to this item. However, I will say, as the report sets out, we have taken the opportunity to review our existing licensing and regulatory committee operations to ensure our practices in line with good practice and offers greater clarity for all parties present at hearing meetings. It's crucial that these meetings are transparent and fair and give the best opportunity for members to be able to make important decisions that can impact people's livelihoods as well as well, their essence, well-being. The main change is technical in that it creates a firm constitutional separation between the licensing and regulatory committees, but it's intended that the same members will sit on both committees. It's now a clear procedure for conducting subcommittee hearings and clarity over the, um, the subcommittee approach. I'm delighted to confirm that the proposals in this report, uh, you received was get one unanimous support from Constitution Working Party as well as the support of both portfolio holder and the Chair of the Licensing Committee. Therefore, I propose that the council adopts this. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much, councillor Kendrick. I call upon councillor Jones to second the item.
Formally seconded, Lord Mayor.
Thank you very much. Um, group spokespersons, councillor Angel, going to speak on behalf of the Greens?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, on the constitutional amendments themselves, I think these will really improve the quality of the work of the Licensing Committee. Splitting out these committees formally will hopefully improve the clarity, the residents over who's doing what, and won't represent any knock-on effects to council or to the councillors that sit on these committees. Both sets of, same set of councils will sit on both, same chair, same vice-chair, lovely and clear what everybody's doing. I also think it will make it a lot clearer around delegated powers, what does go to the committee, the officers, it's clearer for them what they can accept and how they can reject things, including, for example, where there's no paperwork being filed in the right places, and that they'll be able to make a decision, no, okay, we're not discussing this, not wasting councillor and committee time. I think having a proper process for the Regulatory Committee is really going to help residents as well. Feedback I've had from residents is the licensing process can be confusing, it can be quite trans- untransparent, especially for taxi drivers who come in for a hearing, maybe with just a lawyer, not a lot else of what's going on. So I think having this process clearly laid out is really going to help, best outcomes for all, for new councillors coming on, and also crucially, reduce the risk of appeal to the council as well. We did have a discussion at Constitution Working Party about the definition of vicinity because we wanted to make it clear that anybody who was affected, we wanted to make it sure that people who were affected could always comment, and that that would be different for different applications for licensing and different things that were going on. However, in the end, we were satisfied that the legislation does allow us to do that, does allow us to vary it and have wider definitions of vicinity for bigger applications, smaller ones for smaller ones, so everybody was happy and that on the end. Um, and as the Chair of the Constitution Working Party, I'd just like to say, the last meeting doing that, and I'd really like to thank all the officers who've helped us out on that over the years, and also all the councillors. I think that's been a committee where we've been able to actually genuinely work cross-party. We've not always voted in our councillor groups even, and also everybody there has actually genuinely got into the topic in discussion. I felt like everybody in the room was contributing. So thank you, everybody, for the quality of discussion this year on constitutional matters.
Thank you very much, councillor Angel. Councillor Ackroyd, would you like to speak on behalf of the Lib Dems?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As the third person to speak on this tonight, I'll keep my remarks brief. Uh, looking at the proposal to separate out licensing, licensing and regulatory committees with appropriate policy discussion in both, it would seem eminently sensible to follow best practice as advised by lawyers. In addition, the procedures for subcommittees will provide greater clarity across the board on issues such as whether or not hearings need to take place, and importantly, clearer understanding for applicants and their representatives on what procedures should be followed. This can only be helpful in what can seem sometimes a confusing and stressful situation. We're very happy to accept the report.
Thank you very much. Um, any other members wish to speak on this? Right, councillor Jones, councillor Stuteley. Uh, councillor Jones, please go ahead.
Um, just like, we've had comments about the process being difficult, and I suppose it is, um, but that, just want to highlight, this is another step, positive step forward in, um, a really revamped regulatory service that is, we're going out to recruitment for shortly, and it's another really positive step of us, a part of the council modernising, and I'm looking forward to, along with lipstick from a constitutional point of view, but portfolio holder, I'm looking at things like the IT, because when we're talking about practicality, that's just as important. Um, so it's one more positive step forward, and I'm looking forward to it going through.
Thank you very much. Um, councillor Stuteley?
Um, thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, I'd like to thank, um, councillor Jones for pushing forward the, um, the developments in this department, um, and, um, as current Chair, um, I'd like to, uh, support this, um, and, uh, I believe that, uh, going forward, uh, the process will be more streamlined, um, and more efficient, uh, certainly with the delegated powers, and I'd certainly like to, uh, thank officers for, uh, consulting with us and for, for pushing this through. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Stuteley. Any other members wish to speak? Councillor Kendrick, would you like to respond? Better for the two. Thank you very much indeed. We now move to the vote. All those in favour? Unanimous. Right, if you just hang on in there while I find the magic words because two hours have passed. So we've reached two hours, um, I need to ask if any of the remaining items can be taken as unopposed business? Do any members wish to oppose any of the remaining items being taken? So that's items eleven onward.
I don't wish to oppose, but, uh, there is the proposal to withdraw motions thirteen E and thirteen F, I'll just remind you of that, Lord Mayor, because they're being deferred until June.
Right, so can you just say that again for clarity?
So councillor Jones, a proposer of motion thirteen E, and myself, proposer of motion thirteen F, would like to withdraw those motions, um, from tonight's meeting.
Okay, thank you. So they can go, um, oh, s- all right, then, I'll, yes, you're right, just point that out, so we'll have a second and a vote on this. So, what about the other items? And that's eleven onward. Cleveland, councillor Hampton?
I'd like to oppose, uh, motion thirteen A contacting the council, please.
So thirteen A will be debated?
I'll take, I'll take a punt on this, Lord Mayor. Um, the remaining last council meeting, well, you know, what the hell. Um, items, items eleven and, and twelve, I suspect there is support for those going through without, um, without debate?
Phew. Right, so that needs a vote? No, okay. So only thirteen A will be debated, is that right? Councillor Giles?
Uh, thank you. Uh, we'd like to oppose thirteen G, so it's debated.
Thirteen A and thirteen G? Any other? So we will, we're going to take a ten-minute break, don't care what you say, um, and we will turn and discuss items thirteen A and thirteen J. Thank you.
councillor Bogaline, would you like to move motion thirteen A?
Could you clarify how many minutes I have got, Lord Mayor, please?
Ten minutes.
Thank you, that's all I needed to know. I'm quite surprised that we're debating this motion, to be honest. I thought that'd be a pretty straightforward one for everyone to agree on. Quite sensible actions here that are self-explanatory, but luckily I'm prepared. My speech will consist of quotes from residents that directly illustrate why the council needs to improve its communication with residents. I would like to make it really clear that these are not my words and thoughts, but those of residents. So please be mindful of this when responding to the motion, or not debating it at all, or shoving it under the carpet, or kicking it in the long grass. These are all considerations from residents, from your residents. So a very frequent theme is that the council does not provide updates when residents raise concerns. Here's an example, it's Star General. "I reported two years ago about door frames that are rotten, still waiting for them to be repaired. I have recently again sent an email to request an update, heard nothing. The only way you ever hear anything from them is if you go through the councillors." The same issues about a complete lack of updates is often raised with us when it comes to promised estate improvements. Here's an example. Quote, "We have been told ages ago that we will be getting a security door system, possibly at some point this year. I was wondering if you have received any updates on this, please?" I haven't, of course. I think the security doors issue is a really good example of how confusing the communication from the councillors. Some residents have been told years ago that they're on the list for security, for secure entry doors, but have never been updated by the councillor about the delays in procurement, the continuous reprioritisation, or any indication when finally they will be receiving the doors. The next ones are quotes that show how important it is for residents to be able to escalate reports or complaints that have had no or inadequate responses from the council. From a tenant who reported drugs excrement, men with knives and threats to her children repeatedly over two years near St Augustine Street. Quote, "I have been back in touch with the council and have been advised to ask to report things again. The stories of things that have happened in our homes is endless and distressing, and for us to just be ignored and pushed from one person to another is shameful. We're not asking for anything other than safety in our homes. Why must we as residents constantly be understanding of the council and other areas when they are not in any way understanding or caring towards us and our situation?" From a resident in the new passive house, that has a close who reported a fault with their windows, quote, "To be honest, after three years of trying to speak to the council about the situation, it seems clear they will not ever be interested in sorting it out." And here is a quote which illustrates really well why we are calling for more overview of what tasks have been completed by contractors and much better communication with tenants. This is from Leopard Court, from a resident who reported damp. "I had a call from an officer last week and he's coming to my flat on Tuesday twenty seventh of September regarding the damp on ceiling. I've had yet more issues with repairs and over this, and fed up, doesn't even cover it. I happened to look at an outstanding repair on my front last week. I saw that from June, they had made an appointment for today, twenty September, from eight AM to twelve noon. Only smart was, they had an ask to inform me, and I found early mornings difficult. So anyway, I moved my plans around and was up at seven AM. Well, it was a no-show, no call or anything. And a subsequent message after the twenty-seventh had been, been and gone. He didn't show yesterday the twenty-seventh a no-call message. Tried his mobile and it just fell out. Repair person didn't show the previous Tuesday twenties. Then it disappeared from website. I mean honestly, if you want to ever get on top of compliance and repairs issues, the first step should be actually turning up. And if you don't turn up, that should not count as a job completed, no." And here are some comments residents made on the Norwich City Council social media post regarding the Eton Park parking charges. Probably one of the most scandalous examples of a tick box consultation there I've ever come across. And that's actually something that the motion aims to prevent happening ever again. Quote, "Pointless consultation tick box, they were always going to do this despite all the feedback." Another quote, "How many of the seven hundred-plus consultations' responses were in agreement? Virtually none, I suspect, especially as it was necessary to ask people who'd objected, myself included, whether we wished to maintain our objection after the end of the consultation period. Sad day for Norwich." And I actually have to comment on this really again. You know that consultation is part of my bread and butter in my day job, and I was absolutely gobsmacked when I heard that respondents to the consultation were requested to respond to an email to maintain their objection for no clear reason whatsoever. I've never heard of anything like this before, ever. What was the motivation behind this, following the discussion about this consultation at the last full council, to pile on more bad press and feelings on the issue? And I think this fact makes the final comment on this even more understandable. Quote, "Seeing as ninety-one per cent of people were against charging for parking at Eton Park, the council have listened and reacted by imposing charges anyways. Local democracy in action, no wonder most people have very little faith in politicians." And here is a quote which illustrates the need to review the equality impact of the customer service. Many residents highlight that it becomes more and more about knowing how to play the system or who to contact. Quote, "I have an elderly neighbour who lives next to a park. The evergreen hedge in the park grew so tall that he lost all his light. I then contacted the council via info ad. I got a copy-and-paste response saying nothing could be done. I responded with further information, relevant legislation, got the same negative copy-and-paste response. I then contacted officers in the parks and open spaces directly and the issue was quickly resolved." This would obviously not have been resolved if the elderly resident did not have someone to help, and if this person would not have known how to try and circumvent being fucked off. I also want to mention the close of nature of City Hall, which has been noticed by many, from a public questioner who could not enter the building, to an empty law officer who was scheduled to attend a licensing meeting and could not get into the building. Here's her quote, "I've worked in local government for thirty years and I've never seen such poor customer service." Finally, on face-to-face meeting. Can I just remind everyone that I had taken to ask a question at the last full council meeting to try and get a face-to-face, multiple team meeting arranged for vulnerable resident, because it just seemed impossible to do it any other way? I was promised that this would be looked into. Has the residence since had a face-to-face meeting? No. Have I had as much as an acknowledgement to the email I've sent to the leaders requesting? No. I would conclude it's pretty hard to get a face-to-face meeting. So these are all quotes from residents, and I hope you take them to heart. And I would have hoped that that would be enough to say, yes, we need to do something to improve our communication with residents. And I think all the actions I've included in the motion are sensible. They're not ridiculous, they're not asking for much, they're just asking to review and to improve. And I'm really, really disappointed that that's not going to happen tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Bogaline. Called upon councillor Lubick to second this item.
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. Councillor Bogaline has put the issues very clearly before us this evening. A review and actions to make sure that all citizens are served and inequality issues addressed when contacting the council. Rarely do we have a motion where this council is the sole body who can achieve changes as a result of the motion, but this evening we do. It is up to us and us only to improve contact with the council in an inclusive and effective way, putting residents at the heart of everything we do. We bothered to put it on our corporate plan, I suppose that was a start, now let's start putting it into practice. It was about a year ago that I first noticed an increase in the number of residents contacting me in frustration at not being able to contact the council themselves. They wanted to report housing repairs, pay bills and make general inquiries. They didn't have access to online, um, access. There were long waits on the phone, no call back, or just being cut off after a message, "We are experiencing a high level of calls, please call back later." However, despite complaining last April, questions to the council, and even a request for scrutiny to look at this problem, there seems to have been little or no improvements to the situation. In fact, just this morning I had a call from Jean, Jean, an Eton resident, who reported to me that she'd been on the phone on the sixth of March, March at ten thirty in the morning, and it took her fifty minutes to get through. I said, Jean, whatever, what are you holding on so long for? She said, well, there's an anomaly in the, um, in the cards that I've been sent. They don't make any sense to me, she said. But I did eventually get through after fifty minutes. And she said, this recycling man is very nice, and he said, oh, he said, I think you're right, they don't make sense to me at all either. So he said, I'll have to have a look at it and call you back. He never called back. So she said, I'm talking to you about it now. And I said, oh, thank you, Jean. And, and, yeah, they don't make any sense to me either. So she, this eighty-year-old lady has got a point. We've made some mistakes with our recycling. But the, the, the fact that she took fifty minutes to phone up, and then be told, I'll call you back, and then, what, a week later, nobody calls her. I mean, you just have to do something yourself, don't you? Um, so on it goes, so a whole year of this, and I'm sure other councillors, not just Green and Liddon councillors, surely other councillors have noticed an increase in their workload?
Can you begin to?
Haven't you?
Oh, please.
Well, and yes, we've already heard about the, um, the, uh, consultation. It is particularly worrying that, um, people are losing confidence in the, in the council's public consultations. So we really must start doing something, and the recent peer review resulted in an action plan which included prioritised plans to strengthen community and tenant engagement, and to deliver, to deliver on the Norwich City Council's stated commitment to put residents at the heart of everything we do. I look forward to that.
Very much. Any other councillors wish to speak on this? Oh, so, sorry, yeah. Just key to move on. Councillor Hansman, would you like to speak on behalf of the Labour Party?
Uh, thank you, and thank you to the opposition for the motion and for your introductions, um, which all consider some really important issues. And apologies that I am going to be talking quite quickly because there are twenty separate asks in this motion, so quite a lot to cover. Um, and this motion wants these asks to be directed at Cabinet, but I would question if an adequate level of scrutiny has been undertaken on them thus far, as many seem to be duplicating work that already happens, too vague for us to make a call on at this point, or not following best practice. I'll start by running through some such points. So firstly, in the opening paragraphs, I think the phrasing used around callbacks is misleading. It says over three thousand four hundred and eighty-eight people were rung back as over not answered first time, which suggests that getting ring back is dependent on trying to get through and failing to be answered first time, which isn't true. Many of these would have proactively opted for this option. It's one that suits a lot of customers, feedback on its provision has been positive, and it helps keep times down for those who do have to get through imminently. And I'll note at this point that in the last corporate assurance report, the target for customer satisfaction was exceeded. But then on to, uh, section three of this motion, people can make face-to-face appointment requests across all service areas, and we've already reviewed this provision and carried out an equality impact assessment. We're not aware of video appointments being requested, though we have already trialled this for the in-trans service. It's also not clear how these would help make sharing documents easier, as is claimed here. The timeout function, uh, on line forms, on online forms is a security feature. We've already increased this from ten minutes to thirty minutes, and we've already commissioned work to do the, uh, mystery shopper-style approach that's cited here. Section four relates primarily to housing, and just last week at Cabinet, we adopted, um, a tenant engagement and housing management strategies, which address some of the themes here. Motion suggests trialling distinctive uniforms for staff, but there are concerns that this could lead to staff being targeted, or could cause customer confidentiality issues if a resident doesn't want other people to know they're engaging with our services. A uniform isn't in current staff contracts, so it is something that would or should be consulted on with staff and unions before any decisions are made. On, um, the fifth set of points here, responding to complaints is already a key performance indicator, so of course services are striving to achieve these targets. Automated updates are already used for some basic inquiries, so it's not an approach we'd rule out where it is appropriate. And on complaints, there is already a procedure for residents to complain to the council, and then onwards to the ombudsman if they feel the need to, so it's not clear really what's being asked for here. On the sixth section, we have a customer contact team. If team members had to include their individual contact details and correspondence, some would get inundated. Inquiry should come through to the customer call centre to be dealt with by the most appropriate or available person. As for contractors, becoming part of the no-wrong-door policy, this policy is actually used by, for example, Pathways, who we work with in partnership, um, on tackling roughsweeping our customer experience and digital strategy sites, one front door. These are distinct and different concepts. So Labour Group can't support this motion outright at the moment, but we would like to see some further scrutiny and development of it before it's considered. At a minimum, we'd like for following to happen. So firstly, as has been noted, we underwent a corporate peer review. This praised the council's positive journey of change while also providing recommendations for further development. Some of these are around, uh, community engagement and citizen participation, as is section two of this. So work is commencing to meet these recommendations, and the council will welcome, uh, members of the review, of the review team back in the autumn to conduct a short progress update. And secondly, scrutiny committee are set to consider a topic forum on the, um, the topic, I suppose, of council consultations at the meeting on Thursday, which is also covered in section one here. So the committee should be given the opportunity to accept this item, should they wish, and carry up the scrutiny if so. And actually, we would welcome wider scrutiny on all the topics in this motion, if that's what scrutiny members wish to shoot. So on this basis, I would like to propose a motion under paragraph seventy-two L of the council's constitution to adjourn the debate on this item until after that scrutiny meeting, considering the council's consultation goes ahead, if that's what they choose to put on the work programme, and until after the progress update on the peer review, um, mentioned just now is, um, given to the council. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Seventy-two L, which requires a second. Councillor Water to second. Um, for this, we move straight to a vote, all those in favour. All those who wish to abstain on this? All those who vote against? The motion is carried. Right, this is going to be fun. An amendment to item three G has been received from councillor Oliver, which has been secreted. Councillor Cat indicated he is not willing to accept the amendment. It will be therefore dealt with in the usual way after the substantive motion has been moved and seconded. So I call upon councillor Cat to move this motion. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, in January twenty nineteen, the council declared, um, a climate emergency and accordingly, um, committed to achieving net zero emissions as soon as possible. Um, in September twenty twenty-one, the council formally adopted the Glasgow Declaration on Food and Climate, which was a groundbreaking commitment, uh, by local and regional governments to tackle the climate emergency through integrated food policies, uh, thus undertaking a proactive, uh, to proactively promote the conception of plant-based foods to achieve this goal. Um, quite bold words from the council, and they do require some bold action, um, that recognises every aspect of the various crises we find ourselves in, environmentally, socially and economically. Um, if you want to live up to that word, we can't sit back and ignore the huge part that food systems play, um, uh, in this, and the urgent need for institutional changes to eliminate the substantial contribution that food production plays in climate change and global deforestation. Uh, agriculture, forestry and land use contributes a much higher percentage of global emissions than transport, all transport emissions combined. Transport may be the sector which receives a lot of attention, um, and we may see a lot around us, um, but the food we eat is actually the secret emitter in all of this, um, and we are running out of time to take action. As we know, climate and risk experts predict that the catastrophic effects of climate breakdown will mean systemic cascading risks relating to food insecurity, including food shortages, uh, societal tensions, hunger, malnutrition, unrest, and conflict, with further predictions about serious crop failure in the decade of the twenty forties. When we have already such a huge risk to our food supply from climate change, we should be doing all that we can to ensure that the current behaviours and food systems are not actively contributing to this. There are a number of studies which tell us that we gain more energy and protein from plant-based foods than from animal products. Meanwhile, um, a kilo of beef will create, um, on average, twelve times more CO2 than, uh, a kilo of plant-based proteins, while producing a litre of dairy milk uses, on average, uh, at least four times as much land as producing a litre of plant milk. Um, furthermore, only half of our food crop, uh, calories feed people directly, um, and only a fraction of the thirty-six per cent of food crop calories that go to feed livestock actually make their way into, uh, the meat and milk that we consume. It's a huge waste of food, uh, makes our food production much more carbon-intensive and inefficient, uh, actually feeding people while driving even greater food insecurity across the world. Um, it can't be something that we uphold. Even the UK government, uh, in their national food strategy, have noted that a thirty per cent reduction in meat consumption is necessary for future food security. Um, I'd like to preemptively tackle, um, an ignorant claim that is often made, um, that plant-based, uh, diets can be higher in carbon than locally-produced meat. Um, hopefully anyone that seeks to use that argument will have taken the time to read the text of the motion, uh, that points, uh, points out that the vast majority of imported soy, which, um, has a high carbon footprint, um, uh, is actually used to feed livestock, um, uh, wherever this livestock is being reared, and we do have a huge trade, um, deficit on this actually, um, so that just increases the, um, carbon, uh, carbon footprint of the meat and animal products that we consume. Um, a, uh, plant-based diet also has wider impacts than just the environment. Uh, Sustain Alliance estimates over, overconsumption of meats costs the NHS about one point two billion, um, annually, and is responsible for forty-five thousand deaths per year. Uh, this motion is proposing some very small changes that the council can make to do our bit in ensuring that we have a sustainable food production system, which is able to meet our needs in the long term. Um, to be very clear, a food, um, food system based around animal products, um, in the long term will not do this. Um, this motion has a range of actions that will improve the accessibility and availability of plant-based options across the city, will share information about the benefits, uh, of reducing consumption of animal products, and enable communities to grow their own food cheaply and easily through community gardens, um, an option that many people currently do not have, um, and one that will be a real lifeline to those people that are struggling under the cost of living crisis. Um, I'd like to finish by saying that Norwich is a well-known, is well-known as a vegan and vegetarian centre of the UK. Um, many would like to say that it's London, but many visitors, um, have been pleasantly surprised by the huge array of options that we have across the city, um, that we should be really, really proud of, um, that aren't available elsewhere. Uh, the motion will strengthen this reputation even further, I think. Uh, many other local authorities, including, um, Edinburgh, Cambridge and Oxfordshire, have passed similar motions, uh, so let's, uh, make sure that we do not fall by the wayside and that we take the action that we have already committed, uh, about declaring a climate emergency back in twenty nineteen. Um, if we want to stick to our word, we should be passing this, uh, motion.
Thank you very much, councillor Cat. I call upon councillor Osborne to second the motion.
Thank you, and thank you to councillor Cat for proposing it. And this motion is really evidence-based. Uh, councillor Cat has highlighted and outlined some of the evidence of the carbon impact of plant-based diets, and whether they're beneficial. I would talk a bit more about the social, um, the social science evidence behind it. And this motion is about change at the level of institutions and social norms. It goes beyond the limited and limiting approach to behaviour change that sees change as being all about individual choices. I've had a number of conversations with Labour councillors about that, that paradigm. There's a very useful report from the Behaviour Change Unit at what used to be Bayes that outlines how behaviour change happens. It shows that, yes, individuals may feel that they have agency and they can choose whether to eat a beef burger or to eat a bean burger, but far more important than our individual choices are the contexts and circumstances that shape or constrain those choices. In the words of those report authors, "These social material and financial dimensions of our choice environment really matter. In fact, they reliably matter much more than our knowledge or attitudes." And so it's the actions of institutions, including institutions like this council, that play the biggest role in shaping the choice environment. And governments, including local government, can change the choice environment upstream by incentivising businesses to align with net zero and social goals. They can also change the environment midstream by making environmentally friendly options the default by encouraging social norms and encouraging the visibility of pro-environmental behaviours, and they can make it easier to make the right choices. And individual behaviour change, by contrast, only has downstream effects and is the most limited form of behaviour change. And so this motion sets out to change the direction of the flow of that stream. It's based on sound behaviour change principles. It looks to encourage the, the changes that I outlined just now in incentivising businesses, redirecting investment and redirecting consumer choices. It reinforces a growing social norm that meat and dairy should be an exception rather than the rule. And there's examples of this approach in action already when you look at, uh, public health interventions around food and healthy eating. Uh, so businesses and right-wing think tanks have cried wolf about the sugar tax, and I would encourage anyone, uh, to heed the way that that debate has been followed, and not apply the same principles to this motion, um, because those individual, those, those, uh, right-wing groups say that the sugar tax restricts, um, individuals' freedom of choice, but actually what it does is addresses the obesity environment, and it redirects investment into projects that benefit social value. Uh, so we need the same and more ambition to shift away from a carbonogenic environment, and an environment that makes carbon-heavy choices the default, and this motion seeks to bring about that change with benefits for health, the economy and the environment all in one.
Thank you very much, councillor Osborne. We've had an amendment submitted which hasn't been accepted, so I'm now going to call upon councillor Oliver to move the amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, um, in summary, I've moved the amendments as outlined in the papers, and we all know what we're trying to achieve, we all agree on where we need to be, continuity and existence depends on it. Such an important motion requires public consideration, and in its amended form allows us to shape the direction of sustainable travel and to be an exemplar for the city. The single most important step that most people can take to protect the environment is indeed to eat pure animal products. This is beyond doubt that we cannot be so simplistic as to assume that vegan automatically means better for the environment and our health, which is why I moved this amendment. Could we honestly say that someone who eats eggs from rescued battery hens is doing less for the environment than someone who eats vegetables that are airfreighted from half a world away? We also need to be mindful, we're asking people to make a change, and this can be daunting. I believe that we can show the citizens of Norwich that it does not have to be one way or another, that achieving net zero does not need to mean the end of the foods that we enjoy. In amending this motion, I move that we can commit to providing high-quality, tasty, sustainable plant-based food produced without exploitation of humans or animals. I'm confident that before long we'll see the vegan options snapped up out of choice, not obligation. As someone who's been vegan for fifteen years, I've seen times change in favor of plant-based diets.
Councillor Oliver, will you just stop for a moment, please?
I've never seen anyone change their position from being hectored or told what to do.
However, I do expect, please, just give me a moment. I do expect basic civility in this chamber. You will listen to civilly. Please listen to the other speakers civilly. If you don't want to do that, as I say, there are three great big doorways there. Sorry for that, councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I also understand most people want to eat less meat, but one thing that gets in the way of this is the sense that they're not doing enough if they're not able to eat only plant-based foods. There are times when we are right to demand change, and there are times when we can present alternatives to people and make sure the desired outcome is the most palatable.
Thank you very much. I call upon councillor Waters to second the amendment.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And of course, the, the shadow over all of this is the fact that there are people who have no food choices because they have no adequate resources and they are dependent on going to, to food banks. Uh, you may bow your head, councillor Oliver, but beyond the middle-class environs in which you live, there are people who are really critical.
Point to personal explanation.
Yeah, so, okay, if it is a piece of information, please go ahead.
I don't see what my personal circumstances has to do with this motion that is about the provision of food within this council and what this council can do to show the citizens of the city.
Thank you very much. Okay.
It just seems you are rather bored with the, that one of the things that concerns this administration, which is food poverty in the city. So, so there's not much difference between us in terms of the, of the issues, the importance of, of, uh, plant-based options as an important initiative, and as councillor Cat admitted himself, um, and very positively, that Norwich has a reputation which, um, is very high in terms of, um, vegan, vegetarian options, and that's, that's very good news. That's the kind of city we are, that's really, really good opportunity. And that's very good news. That's the kind of city we are. That's really, really good opportunity. But there is a point, isn't there, about how you continue to progress along that continuum? And you can talk about, you know, nudge theories from Whitehall ministries. You can talk about telling people what is right for them and then seeking to enforce it. Or you can work on the basis that the narrative is very much in the direction of people wanting choice and wanting choice other than meat and wanting vegetarian and vegan options. But they want to make that choice themselves. And the places that I've visited and actually probably prompted by the motion that councillor Cat put forward as I, you know, look around, cafes, restaurants, and those options are there. And there is nothing worse than trying to, as it were, impose a narrower series of options to make people resist, to get a rather sterile argument going, which then starts to create resistance when actually the narrative is moving with the opportunity that people have to have free choice. And so I can guarantee, for example, that next week's leaving do for myself and councillor Harris, there will be the full range of options available to all those who attend that event. So I think we just need to be careful that we are not imposing on people. And I think that would work very much against the direction of travel of this issue. So I hope very much that you'll be able to support the amendments that councillor Oliver has put forward.
Thank you very much, councillor Waters. So we are looking at the amendments proposed. And bearing that in mind, do any of the councillors wish to speak on this? Councillor Sands, you caught my eye first, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'll be speaking in favour of the amendments that councillor Oliver has moved. They introduce the important concepts of respect, understanding, balance and appropriateness into this motion. The benefits of a balanced diet, including, of course, plant-based food, have long been recognised by health authorities as well as your ground. So the real question is how to follow advice on healthy eating. Doing so in a way which promotes respect and understanding, except that people have the freedom to choose and for their choices to be respected. This is important to me and so is not destroying small businesses who are already struggling by unilaterally imposing changes to their leases and terms which could threaten their very viability. When we declared a climate emergency in twenty nineteen, we also declared a socioeconomic emergency too. This is perhaps forgotten by the opposition. Supporting thriving local businesses and not undermining their business model ensures employment, people having an income from which they can pay taxes, which support public services. This is valuable too. The motion calls not only for the removal of food containing meat events catered for by council, but also calls for the removal or downgrading of menus at council-owned or managed stores, concessions, kiosks and businesses. This not only imposes restrictive business practices, but removes choice by imposing a one-source food option. In any case, not only are council catered events few and far between in these days of austerity, choice has always been offered for as long as I've been a councillor. The so-called plant-based treaty circulated so widely in recent weeks and months, no doubt providing the spur for the Green Party for the current motion, calls for nothing less than a plant-based food economy for all, removing the element of choice in what we eat. The Green Party lured the production of soy products. However, the Sustainable Food Trust does not share their enthusiasm.
Councillor Sands, can you just focus on the amendment? Because I think you're bringing up points that we should debate.
It focuses on them and it attacks their motion. The massive deforestation in environments and social degradation in the Amazon, Serado and other regions of the South American where rainforest and other virgin lands have been cleared, often by using forest fires, millions of graves.
Please, I'm not saying that you shouldn't say these things, but at this point, you're talking about the wider motion rather than arguing why we should accept these amendments.
The motion called upon a new president of Brazil to end all deforestation in the Amazon and to move to a sustainable agriculture not based upon the monoculture of soy, I might find a kernel within it to support. And interestingly, it takes eight litres of water to produce one litre of dairy milk and a hundred and fifty-eight litres to produce one litre of almond drink or soy drink.
Thank you, councillor Sands. Thank you very much.
Well, I haven't finished.
Well, thank you very much for what you've said.
Our three point one million tonnes of soy imported, of which only thirty-five per cent ends up in livestock feed. The rest is in human feed.
Cease. Thank you very much. Next person to caught my eye was councillor Kidman. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I support a diet that moves away from meat and dairy because we do need to. And I want to address point number one in the motion under council therefore resolves to, number one. Following the pilot by Cambridge City Council, which is cited in the motion, to offer more plant-based food, came a report. The food provided was very fresh, good quality and visually appealing. And the social enterprise provided fantastic service during the event. However, there was extremely low uptake... Sorry, I'm speaking so fast. Do you too? It was an extremely low uptake of plant-based food options. Under ten per cent of people tried these options, whilst the vegetarian options and meat-dairy options were all eaten. The general feedback from attendees was that plant-based options should be available as a part of buffet for those who'd like this choice. But most people preferred the non-plant-based options. And some people, the report says, felt under pressure to eat what they wouldn't usually choose. The report said that almost all of the plant-based food was not eaten and therefore had to be thrown away, which it said resulted in significant food waste. Officers recommended that the authority begin with offering twenty-five per cent of the food as plant-based at civic events, increasing in future years as long as people ate the food. We know when we throw food away, it rots and releases methane, and methane has more than eighty times the warming power of carbon dioxide. And finally, Lord Mayor, I have soy milk in tea. To be catered for wherever I go would be fantastic. However, I would be uncomfortable making people drink what I like but which they find unpalatable. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Next person to catch my eye was councillor Bogalai. Please go ahead. I'm going to speak on the motion, amendment.
Yeah, I'm going to speak on the speeches made in favour of the amendment and therefore the amendment. So first of all, I'd like to clarify the report that councillor Osborne was quoting from and that councillor Waters was rejecting as a Whitehall report was not actually produced by the government. You may remember that it was published on the government website and then pulled by the Boris Johnson government because it was too difficult. Because it raised issues around aviation and it raised issues around meat consumption. So I'm quite surprised that you're siding with Boris Johnson here and making arguments around forced choice in nanny state. I actually think that's quite dangerous. It was a really well-thought-out report by independent researchers and it was pulled by the government. It was hidden really well. I mean, it took us a long time to get our hands on it at the time. So I'd really like to see that we're not siding with Boris Johnson on the narrative around nanny state and forced choice and against independent researchers and academics. So that's a start with. I think the second thing is that we're talking about leadership. So this is what your amendment is basically undermining. We're not talking about changing what people eat at home. We're not forcing anyone to do anything. We're talking about showing leadership at the council. Now, there is very recent research that shows that the concern about climate change has gone up. But the confidence that businesses and government, including local government, show the leadership to tackle it has gone down significantly. I'm not surprised why if we can't even get our act together and show leadership in the kind of few events that we're hosting. It's not about forcing anyone to do anything. It's not about getting businesses out of business. It's about leadership. It's about social norms. One of the things that has the most influence on signal and new behaviour, and I think COVID has shown us really significantly that that's the case, is social norms. People do things if you show them that we're behind it. Today, you're not showing leadership and you're not showing the social norm. You're not showing you're behind it. You've significantly watered this down. And that really undermines the path we all need to take. And it's quite disappointing.
Thank you very much, councillor Bogalai. Next person was councillor Osborne.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm really disappointed in the Labour group here. I thought we'd moved beyond this. Because I've had conversations with individual Labour councillors about this false narrative of individual behaviour change, individual choice. This amendment buys into that false narrative. It's really stuck in the past, probably in the twentieth century, sometime in the nineteen fifties probably. And at best, it shows an outdated and limited understanding of how then behaviours change. Please look at the evidence on that. And worst, it's counterproductive. I would hope that we would be, as an evidence-based council, that we base our policies and our debates on evidence. Councillor Cat set out some of the evidence for the carbon impact of plant-based diets versus meat and dairy-based diets. That is incontrovertible. You can go and look at that evidence. There's plenty of it. Councillor Bogalai set out some of the evidence on social behaviour change. And really, sort of arguing against that and saying that we are trying to restrict choice is the same tactics and it's the same kind of disambiguation that we see from the fossil fuel industry. The idea of the carbon footprint and individual choice was invented by BP in the early two thousands. And that was where that idea of individual choice came from. It was intended to divert attention from the structural changes that were needed. The changes that are needed at a government level, that are needed at a business level, the level of diverting investment and focusing attention instead on guilt and on individual choice as if that's something that's incontrovertible and that cannot be changed. Actually, all the evidence shows that if you want to change people's behaviour, like we have done with sugar, like we've done with alcohol in some places, like we've done with gambling, like we've done with so many public health interventions, that needs to come from a government level. You cannot tell people it's up to you. So that's what this motion is about. And really, I would urge the Labour councillors here to get with the picture. Look at the evidence of behaviour change. If you really want to be addressing issues across the board, taking a really forward-looking... This doesn't just apply to climate change. It applies to social problems as well. It applies to poverty. Actually, look at the science of behaviour change and consider how the actions of this council can contribute to that rather than sitting on your hands and leaving it to individuals.
Thank you very much, councillor Osborne. Councillor Lubick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm sorry, councillor Osborne, you're going to have to convince me as well. As a liberal Democrat, we're very happy... I do believe in offering these options. I don't think we should be dictatorial and say that everybody should eat one type of food. So I'm happy to support the amendment and to promote a shift towards plant-based diets. And when you say that we should look at the evidence, as we've heard from councillor Kidman, recently Cambridge did... I think they had a pilot whereby they did only offer the plant-based food. And a significant amount of food had to be thrown away. So by giving people a choice, I think you are encouraging them to try new foods. And you can also sort of explain why you're doing that. But I think in trying to only give... Not give a choice and just to give plant-based foods, I think in the short term, it's going to be counterproductive and there will be waste. And I think it was a Labour councillor at Cambridge said, "We cannot force people to eat food they do not want to eat." The task is to make it so good that people will want to eat it without being told to. So I hope that this amendment is carried, that we should encourage people to act to do the one thing that will be the most impactful in helping the climate crisis. And that is of moving towards a plant-based diet.
Thank you very much, councillor Lubick. Next person to catch my eye was councillor Stunard. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to raise a few issues that have been raised. The first is we're being told that we're not showing leadership. Actually, we are. We are showing leadership. The leadership we're showing is for individual choice, for people to make their own decisions. And we're not suggesting... We're not suggesting or buying into, as you suggest, this idea that individual choices are better than other methods of achieving change in behaviour. What we're arguing is that we need to respect the right of our citizens to make individual choices about what they eat. It's interesting, actually, looking at some of the phrases in our amendments which have not been accepted. Let's have a look at them. "Respecting individuals' rights and freedoms." You've rejected that. You won't accept that amendment. The word "respectfully" again. You've refused that. So that suggests to me, and actually from the body language on the other side of the chamber tonight, lack of respect for local people, bit of arrogance, bit of patronising attitude. That's what I suspect. That's what I'm getting. Now, I'm somebody who supports diets that move from meat to plant-based diet. But as someone said earlier on, and this is really important, if you're trying to impose choices on people, you don't win them over. You actually breed resentment. You actually get the opposite reaction to the one that you want to achieve. So I'm really, really clear. This is about us not trying to manipulate people into doing what we think is best for them, but giving them the choice, the ability to make the right choices for them. That's really, really important. It's a fundamental principle and it's fundamentally what separates us on the different sides of the chamber. You think you know better and you can impose it on people. We don't. We want to give people choices. And I want to finish on this. Because we are, as councillor Waters has said, in the midst of a cost of living crisis. I don't know about in your wards, but in my wards, I meet people who are having to choose whether to heat or aid eat. People who are taking food from food banks that they can't afford to heat. And here you are, having us tonight discussing what type of party food should be served at city hall functions. Shame on you. That's an absolute disgrace and it shows how out of touch you are with the real living conditions of the people of this city.
Thank you very much, councillor Stunard. Next, councillor Project Colton, please go ahead.
Our food bank and community fridge are giving over a hundred free takeaway meals each Friday and to God's send for many people. Us taking the food from the nearby hotel each week is taking away the food waste. I don't think the people needing this food would be very happy for the meat to be taken out.
Thank you very much, councillor Colton. Councillor Giles, please.
Thank you. I'll speak about the amendment proposed at the end of Resolution Four, which proposes that we oblige our tenants to provide vegetarian or vegan options while not insisting that they all redesign their menus. And I was wondering, as the cabinet member responsible for the market, whether you could clarify both for me and for the EDP sitting behind, whether you want me to go around every single individual market trader over the coming weeks if we pass this motion unamended and insist that they all amend their menus in accordance with your demands, so that different things are placed at different places on the menu. And I was also wondering whether your candidate in Thorpe Hamlet, the outgoing Chair of the Norwich Market Traders Association, would support such a policy were I to advocate at the next Market Traders Association meeting. Maybe you'd like to come along and suggest it yourselves.
Thank you very much, councillor Giles. Councillor Hensley, you're just... Please go ahead.
Thank you. This is starting to get a bit like the conspiratorial debates about low-traffic neighbourhoods, where the people who are offering the choice of having more choices available to you are actually accused of doing the opposite. So councillor Kidman pointed out that where there are several options, some of the plant-based food won't get eaten. And, well, if you go to an event and there's things you know you like, things you might like, things you're not too sure about, you're going to stick with what's familiar. But if you're invited to try something new, you're likely to try it. And that becomes a choice that you didn't have before. Personal choice depends, as has been said, personal choice depends on the... Personal choice depends, as has been said, personal choice depends on the options that are available, the options that you can afford, and if you're exposed to plant-based food, that gives you more options, not fewer.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? No. So we... Oh, I'm sorry, please, sorry. Councillor Haynes, I think, yeah, go on, go on Beth.
Thank you. I want to support this amendment really in terms of my own experience of behaviour change. We've had some, I'd say, I don't expect it from some colleagues on the opposite benches, slightly patronising comments about not knowing about behaviour change. This is my bread and butter, this is what I do, in a very real way, day in, day out, where it's about life and death. If in my job I imposed choice to change behaviour, imposed option things, I wouldn't achieve that behaviour change and that is about whether people live or die. I have to take them on a journey of change and that's the journey, in my case, of a journey of recovery, where I expose them to options and alternatives and help them and support them to make choices. So it's a providing options. If I imposed those decisions, I know in a very different setting within mental health, but they would back up for me, they wouldn't engage in that process of behaviour change that is vital to keep them alive. So I think it's a very fundamental thing about allowing someone to have a journey themselves rather than telling them. If I as a professional came in and said, "No, you can't do this, you can't do that", they wouldn't engage in me. So I could go into it in a lot more detail, but I don't like, I find it quite insulting not to be told that there are people on these benches who don't know about that process of change. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Giles. Councillor Haynes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. On the point about our new candidate in Thorpe Hamlet, he is aware of this motion and supports it, so I can answer that directly. On the point about food poverty, I think we're conflating a couple of different issues here. We're conflating the idea for people to be able to eat things that fit their diet at council events, of which the Green Group host none, I would like to point out. And also conflating the very, very real issues of food poverty in our community and what the council can do for those. That's been addressed in other motions over the course of the years. People on all sides of the chamber have spoken eloquently about the need to reduce food poverty, the need to support people in our community in poverty. Representatives of all our groups have done work at County Hall as well about extending the eligibility of free school meals vouchers, for example, for outside of what the government has tried to give. And as a recipient of those free school meal vouchers to my children, I'm grateful for that. There are people on all sides of this chamber who have experience of food poverty and I think it's really, I don't think we should be making assumptions about other people's personal status, their financial status at this point or any other point in their life. On a debate, it is not about that. We do not want to make, to make people in food poverty feel like we are trying to take stuff away from them. We want to give choice to people. This was supposed to be a positive motion about doing something for the environment and also acknowledging that there are social benefits to this as well. This was not supposed to get derailed by people who wanted to make a point because an election is coming. We tried to put this motion in January, it was turned down. We're now trying to make some positive points about this and it's a bit disappointing that it's been used to make points about other people's personal statuses and turn it into a debate about something it isn't. And I think, you know, we should just probably return to the actual motion now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll just finish this and then look at the three-hour rule. So do any of the members wish to speak? Okay. Councillor Oliver, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, briefly, I'd like to thank members for their thoughtful comments and would also... Sorry, it's so late. If it was literally just about the providing of refreshments that are plant-based at the few occasions that we do this as full council, then I think that might be considered more favourably. However, it's the unintended consequences I think we're more concerned about. For example, if somebody's having a cup of tea with a non-vegan cake in the Lord Mayor's parlour, you know, who would be policing that? I hope that all members will feel able to support the motion as amended and I'll leave it there, thank you.
Okay, we now vote on this. All those in favour of the amendment being made? All those who wish to abstain from this? Or those who are against the amendment being made? The amendment's carried, we now have a substantive motion in front of us. So having got that business over, I think this is, in the words of the Constitution, a convenient time. We've been going three hours, in fact, we've been going slightly more than three hours. Do members wish to continue? Or do they wish to adjourn immediately? So we'll need to take a vote, sure. So there's a procedural motion, so the procedural motion is, I'm going to ask a mover, well, I'm the mover actually, I'm going to ask the second, for a second, the procedural motion is that we adjourn immediately. No, I'm sorry, I've misread my, do you want to carry on? So I, right, well, you know, to adjourn immediately, I think...
Propose we move to a vote on the amended motion.
Okay. All right, we've, good old seventy-two, paragraph seventy-two has been invoked to move to a vote.
No, no, we need to have members voting to adjourn immediately.
Well, I think we've just had a motion, so... Say that again.
Yes, thanks, it's three hours, we have to vote.
Right, okay, I'm told from our legal adviser here that the precedent is taken by the procedural motion, do we continue or not? So we need a mover to continue.
I propose we continue.
Okay, and anyone's proposed, okay, so we'll now move, do you wish to continue? Right, okay, so we're going to carry on.
I'll move to a vote on the substantive.
So now we have a procedural motion moving to a vote. Do we have a second? I think we do. So we now vote on this. All those in favour of moving straight to a vote on this? So we are now going to vote on the, no. On...
On the substantive motion, so can we vote and have to give more chances?
Right, okay, we still have to go through this, so give me a brick wall, please. Group spokespersons on the amended motion, which is now the substantive motion, and you put a reminder, who was spoken...
Councillor Oliver?
So we've, so, okay, so the substantive motion has been proposed and seconded, we've amended it, so it's group spokespersons, councillor Oliver, please speak, please respond.
Thank you, I'll just speak quickly. Thank you to councillor Cat for bringing the motion and its now amended form we contend it into positive actions which further the goals of creating a truly sustainable city which puts social, economic and environmental justice at its core. As Norwich City Council, we're looked to by the citizens of Norwich as an exemplar, we can show what's possible and as you've heard, we declared a climate emergency in 2019 and committed to net zero by 2030 into a deadline of 2050 for the city as a whole. As we're here in the chamber, you look behind you, you see the mural by Gennady Ivanov, which is a striking work of art and speaks to the future we have in store. If we do not make these changes, we can't be repeating the same actions and be surprised when we end up in the same fix. I would like to very briefly reference a book called The Joyful Environmentalist, How to Practice Without Preaching by a wonderful author called Isabel Lasada, who watches a documentary called Cowspiracy, which will be familiar to many, and... And confirms that yes, somewhere between fifteen and fifty-one percent of all greenhouse gases are caused by animal agriculture. Animals are the middle body, inefficient one of that, inefficient one of that. Children starve because grains fed to animals and yet we cannot state this certainty, plant-based food is always the only option. Vegan is one option, vegan is another, except that food's not made solely from plants, no one wants to see it going to waste. We have to remember, we don't live in a world where we have equal access to resources, so as well as the means of transport, we need to consider the cost of the energy to prepare the food, now so more than ever. We welcome the inclusion of the importance of community gardens in the motion, but they are part of the picture, but for a sustainable solution to the embedded problem of food poverty and inequitable access to the basic requirements, we urgently need a change in central government. Vegan food is a less expensive option, it is possible to produce a vegan food on pennies, but it's not a lack of ability or creativity that pushes people into poverty but a woeful policy of thirteen years of austerity and the skills one has to develop to survive on too little, and I'm talking of people in our city today to survive, never mind thrive, or ones that require a lot of time and resources. We can provide people options, I can personally attest to the positive effects of vegan cake, but we always must respect people's autonomy while making the preferred choice the most appetizing. So, Lord Mayor, this motion is amended, continues and develops our agendas towards promoting and developing plant-based food in a reasonable, appropriate, sustainable and respectable way, working with our citizens and city businesses on the journey ahead. I hope everyone will now support this.
Thank you very much. Group spokesperson, councillor Lubick, please speak. You don't have to put your hands, yes, reserve the right to speak, yes. Well, let's see, does anybody, no, we've had the move to, we've had the move to a vote, so we now give back councillor Cat the right to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I kind of want to address some of the, some of the various comments that have been made here that are quite scaremongering, to be quite honest with you. And I think you'll be aware, if you've read the text of the motion, that it's not talking about policing people's food choices, and there's been various examples raised about the things that will happen and, you know, the things, the places which are going to have to completely change their practices and the people that are going to have to change their choices. You're all very aware that this motion wouldn't do that and you're using that as a, just for political purposes really, you're all very clear on that, I hope. You mentioned social and economic crises, again, mentioned within the motion, mentioned within the speeches. And again, the whole point of this motion and the whole reason for bringing this is because we have a huge issue of food insecurity and if we don't tackle that, then that is only going to add to the social and economic crises that we have when we talk about, and also please don't lecture me about the conditions that my residents live in. I mean, I deal with on a separate issue, certainly people that live in awful housing conditions that this council completely ignores, so please do not lecture me on that at all. And also, don't talk about personal circumstances, I mean, you obviously assume that everyone on this side of the bench is middle class and that supports the statements you would like to make about us. I come from a working class background, as do many people in my party who are socialist and who are former member of the local party as well, so I just don't think that those things are relevant at all. Again, I mean, there was comments about the market, again, if you wrote the motion, it would say, it says re-tendering, so obviously that wouldn't happen as well. Nobody's trying to police people's food choices here. And if other amendments seek to say that the council will continue to do things, we mentioned the mural, which is an incredible piece of art and I'm really glad that it's here. You said you will continue to make sure that plant-based foods, options are available within, within the council. At the event where that was unveiled, there were no plant-based options, the caterers confirmed that to us, so your amendment is mute there. We also talked about community gardens and giving that option to people to create, to grow their own food and that being a really vital resource in the cost of living crisis that we do have at the moment and giving power back to people. Again, you put an amendment saying that you would continue to promote the establishment of new community gardens. I mean, I raised the idea of the Main Street Community Garden years ago as a member of the public and it's been constantly ignored by cabinet members and the leader of the council who have said that they would email me, set up meetings, that has not happened. So if you'd like to carry on with that now, that would be great, but I'd still hope that you support this motion because it is really, really crucial at this time.
Thank you very much councillor Cat. So at this point, we will now move to a vote on the substantive motion as amended. So all those who are in favour, please raise your hand. Is that unanimous? So that's unanimous. Good members.